Counselor Emilio, would you like to join us? Apologies, everybody here, we're just a couple of minutes coming out of a separate meeting upstairs, and we're going to be right with you in about a couple of seconds. Counsel, are we all ready? Okay, great. Do we have Counselor Isaacson? Thank you. Thank you, everybody. I'd like to start by acknowledging that we are holding this meeting of the Committee of the Whole on the traditional territories of the Coamination, Coam and Treaty Nation, that is. And I am your chair today, as it is July, and July is my month to be the acting mayor and chair of the Committee of the Whole. So we have a fairly full agenda today, and is there any comments on the agenda that we have before us?
All right, I do have some comments on the agenda. So we do have some delegations, and I understand some of the delegates have also declared that they plan to run in the next election. And so I just wanted to caution people who are delegates that counsel is not to be used for a forum for campaigning for your perspective on any political items. That's not what it's for. So you're to ensure that you're not campaigning as part of your delegations. Also, it is busy, crowded, and warm today, so if people could please refrain from commenting out of turn when it isn't your turn to speak, that would be very much appreciated by us trying to get through our work today. Thank you for joining us, and I will consider a motion to adopt the agenda. Seconded by Counselor Almeida, all in favor? It looks like all are in favor. Any opposed? Thank you. Unanimous. We have the minutes 2.1, 2.2 on the agenda. Does anybody wish to adopt, to make a motion about that? Counselor Almeida?
I move that the minutes of the Committee of the Whole meetings held on June 4, 2024, and the special committee of the whole meeting held in May 23, 2024 be adopted.
Seconded by Mayor Wasnam, all in favor? That is unanimous. That moves us on to delegations, and I'd like to invite Kate Sutherland to the podium, please.
Thank you, Mayor and Counsel. My name is Kate Sutherland, and I made the move to live here three years ago. I'm an associate member of Westview Ratepayers Society, and I live in Cranberry, and I'm also a consultant in community and organizational change. And I'm speaking here about the Bridging Community Differences Initiative. That's a project of the Westview Ratepayers Society's Education Subcommittee. Like so many, I'm deeply concerned by the divisiveness in this wonderful, wonderful community. And I believe that an important part of helping us move forward is that we find ways to really listen to each other and to be able to speak to each other, get to know each other as people behind the positions that currently put people in different camps. Through my work, I heard about an organization in the States called Living Room Conversations. It was started in 2011, and they have been helping people across social and political divides to talk to each other in ways that have been very impactful. The basic idea is this, that two people who are each on, have differing political opinions, each invite two people to make a group of six, and then they meet in a living room for a structured conversation. The opening round of that conversation is about getting to know each other and ask questions like, what would your best friend say about you? Also, what might, how do you understand your life's purpose or your mission? So there are questions that help people get to the heart. And then the second round of the conversation is about sharing perspectives on an issue that's contentious or divisive in some way. And then the third part of the conversation is a chance to reflect and for people to think about whether or not their perspective has changed about either the issue in question or another person, or if in some way, you know, what was that experience like? What new learning or understanding? Have we found any common ground? Those kinds of reflective questions. So it's a structured process, takes about 90 minutes, and it's been studied by the Fetzer Institute in the United States. They did an 18-month study, and they found evidence of individual impacts, that immediately there was improved mindset and listening skills, that the participants learned something new every time. And in the longer term, they applied the tools that they learned through the process in other parts of their lives, and they had a greater interest in systemic change coming out of the process. Then in terms of collective impacts, they found that it countered the narrative that it's hopeless, that it's hopeless to try to have conversations across difference, and that the tool is useful for building potential allies and for understanding differences. They also found it to be a promising way of bringing together community perspectives on community issues, which I think is extremely relevant to us here, and that they can shift power dynamics, taking people out of narratives of us and them, for example. So I brought this idea to Westview Ratepayers Society because I see this organization as being dedicated to inclusivity and embracing the diversity of perspectives and working to find common ground. And the first thing that we did was to pilot it. So I partnered with Robin Murray, who's part of the executives of the Westview Ratepayers, and he's on the Education Subcommittee, and each of us invited two people, and we had three consecutive sessions, each meeting for 90 minutes. And the results of our pilot were proof of concept for us here. From the evaluation forms, we learned that people who were typically uncomfortable talking about politicized topics with people who are different from them felt very comfortable discussing the topics in the sessions. So they moved from a rating of 3 out of 7 to 6.5 out of 7 in terms of comfort level. People thought that the sessions were really valuable. Where 1 is extremely valuable and 7 is not valuable, the average in the group was 2. People were likely to recommend the process, where 1 is they would absolutely recommend it, and 7 they wouldn't recommend it, the group averaged 2 again. And people felt that more understanding and appreciation towards the people in their conversation was 2 out of 7 again. So the pilot sessions confirmed that the process can help us get better at speaking across difference. It can help us, my personal experience is that, I've been a consultant for a long time, I made a major shift in actually listening rather than writing off people who had very different perspectives than mine. I felt very heard, as did others, and that helps us be more connected. And when we're listening to each other, we tend to service, surface shared values and even perspectives that we share. And those values and perspectives provide a strong foundation for common ground and ways forward. So my intention with the initiative and why I brought it forward was the idea of helping to strengthen the fabric in this community so that we can talk to each other, even if we don't agree with each other, we can, we can find a way of meeting with each other and learning from each other and finding good ways forward. So currently, the executive of Westview Ratepayers has completed two sessions of their own pilot, and there are folks here who can speak to that. And while the sessions can be fully self-guided, it can be helpful to have some experience before involving others in the process. So for that reason, I've designed a two-hour orientation for people interested in co-hosting their own conversations. And that orientation offers a chance to experience the process in microcosm and then reflect on the experience to understand why things are structured the way they're structured. And it might also be a place where people can find a co-host so that they can go forward and create their own conversations in their communities. I understand that there will be folks who don't want to do it that way, like would find it a bit intimidating to co-host. So another way to participate is by joining a series of large group conversations that I would convene and host in collaboration with the Westview Ratepayer Society. And those sessions would start with an introduction to the whole process and then break into small groups, so they'd be in a group of five or six within the larger meeting. So my purpose being here is really to let you know that this is happening and to let everyone watching this and hearing about it to know that my next step is piloting the orientation session over the summer, and I'm really interested in people who would like to be part of that pilot orientation. So I have ways to get in touch with me, my best being my email, so I can share that with staff. But that's, that's my presentation. Thank you for your attention.
So do we have any questions of counsel? Mayor, go ahead.
Microphone, microphone.
You need your microphone, Mayor, please.
Thank you very much. We've had a chance to chat, I've had a chance to chat with the executive at the Westview, and the ones that have gone through the program basically say the same thing that you did. It's a very interesting learning opportunity, and they're much better listeners now, so thank you for coming forward and sharing this with us.
You're welcome, yeah. Gives me a chance to say that when I took it to Westview, I didn't expect them to want to pilot it themselves. And, and that's an adaptation and additional, it builds on the concept. Normally, it's people who don't know each other, but the Westview executive is an intact group, and they just, Neil has been the part of that, I don't know, can I invite him to say a few words about the experience? Or I can just say on his behalf that, whichever way it works, what he said to me about it is that his background includes being involved in organizational change as well, and that, that it is a very, that in order for groups to work well and, and work towards common goals, they need to be coherent, and that this is a process that helps intact groups as well as communities to, to connect better.
Thank you, Kate. We have Counselor Isaacson?
Thank you, Chair. Kate, you had mentioned asking people to sign up for pilots, et cetera. Would it be helpful for council members to sign up, or would that, would that make it more difficult, do you think?
That's a great question. I haven't, I'm not coming to ask, like, it feels to me like this is an initiative that the community needs to do for itself, and that counsel has its own work and that you, if you've felt you wanted to do it as counsel, that could be a very interesting process, that you yourselves as a group of seven devote some time to doing that, that that's a fairly big ask of your time. The, yeah, the impulse for me is that, that it's, it's about our humanity, our shared humanity, and the, can we see each other, and can we talk to each other, and can we listen to each other? So that, the, why the process is different and powerful, I believe, is that it's, it's not in the public eye, it's not for what others might say as they see you, you know, like, you're not, you're not, you're not in public, you're in a living room, and, and you're able to let down your guard and, and, yeah, there's more of our shared humanity that comes forward in, in the process.
And just a follow-up, Chair? One thing, one thing I was going to share was, I don't, not sure how your work is being funded, whether you're just doing it kind of as a community volunteer at this point, but I would encourage you, if, if at, in this, in the future, at some point, if you're, say, for example, applying for funding from a foundation or, you know, some philanthropic organization, feel free to write to counsel to get a letter of support. That would be something that I'd be willing to entertain, to add to any grant application.
Thank you, thank you, yeah.
Counselor Seltzer?
Yeah, thank you very much. Just wonder if there's a timeline to your rollout of this, or whether it's going to be just according to response you get through contact by people who find out about your program through the, through this meeting, and possibly other advertising might turn up in a peak, who knows?
Right, that's a great question. I have been kind of listening and following. I had hoped to be further along than we are now. I had hoped to potentially pilot in June, and summer in Powell River sort of goes. But where, where there's interest, I'll respond to that, like, this is a priority for me.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Kate. So for those who want to get in touch with you and express their interest, how do they do that?
They can reach me at, I can give you my email.
Right.
kate@emergecollab.com, which is E-M-E-R-G-E-C-O-L-L-A-B dot com.
Okay.
Yeah.
Are we able to publish that on the agenda or the minutes, or, okay?
Yes, yeah, I'm happy for that to go out into the world, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, thanks for the question.
Thank you so much for coming forward and telling us about your Bridging the Divide Initiative.
Bridging Community Differences.
Bridging Community, okay.
Rolls off the tongue, there we go. Thank you.
I gotta get the name right. So that brings us to Ms. Diane Sparks and Frances Widows around reconciliation. No. No. No, I think that you're here to be a delegate, and trying to have signs and cheering and all of that is not really helpful to just, yeah. And also, if you could use the microphone so that people can hear you and.
Okay. Good afternoon, Counselors, Mayor. My name's Diane Sparks. My delegation today is about truth and how we must have truth before we will achieve reconciliation. To help us understand this concept, I have brought my friend, Dr. Frances Widowson, visiting all the way from Calgary, Alberta. Dr. Frances Widowson is an expert in Indigenous policy and has studied issues pertaining to truth and reconciliation for 30 years. She first worked as a policy analyst for the government of the Northwest Territories, combining science and Indigenous knowledge. She then received a PhD in political science at York University and worked as a professor for 15 years studying Indigenous policy. She has two peer-reviewed books on Indigenous, non-Indigenous relations, and edited a volume that incorporated diverse perspectives on Indigenous ways of knowing into the university curriculum. For the last eight years, she has worked with a network of researchers studying the history of the residential schools. She is currently a senior fellow with the Frontier Center for Public Policy. Frances is one of the authors of Canada's current bestseller book, Grave Error, about the Kamloops Indian Residential Schools. And at this time, I would like to bring Frances Widowson up here to speak on this subject. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, counselors, for allowing me to speak with you today. My name is Frances Widowson. I live in Calgary, Alberta. In 193.
Sorry, Frances, could I ask people in the audience to please not speak when it's not your turn? We need to listen to the person who's speaking. I would like you to stop talking too, please. Thank you. Carry on.
Can we have the clock, the time added to the clock, please?
No, we may not. Carry on.
In 19, excuse me? So you're not going to add time to the clock even though you took time speaking? Is that correct?
That is correct, thank you.
So once again, we see what is wrong with the council in Powell River. In 1935, the black scholar W.E.B. Du Bois, very famous black scholar, wrote an essay about the Black Reconstruction, which was the period after slavery in the United States. The essay made the following insightful observation about writing history. Quote, "What is the object of writing the history of Reconstruction? Is it to wipe out the disgrace of a people which fought to make slaves of Negroes? Is it to show that the North had higher motives than freeing black men? Is it to prove that the Negroes were black angels? No, it is simply to establish the truth on which right in the future may be built," unquote. This quote is important for today's delegation because it draws attention to issues that have been on the minds of citizens of Powell River for the last three years. Truth and reconciliation, or as Du Bois would put it, establish the truth on which right may be built, and right is justice, on which justice might, may be built. In these discussions, it is claimed again and again that we need truth before we can achieve reconciliation. This was the position of Sean Carlton, an academic from the University of Manitoba, who gave the lecture on, quote, "Who was Israel Wood Powell at the Powell River Library" in February? Carlton, however, made a number of untrue claims in his presentation, as well as in the past. Most disturbing was his position a few years ago that a mass grave of 215 children's bodies had been found at the Kamloops Indian Residential School. My work on this case in the book Grave Error is based on the research of the incredible researcher Nina Green, has shown that this is false, and how it is in fact highly improbable that even one child is buried in the Kamloops Apple Orchard. The assertion that we must have truth before we will achieve reconciliation was also the position of the Joint Working Group. It claimed, for example, that the Tlaman Nation was proposing the name change in light of the increasing social awareness of the truths of colonialism and the harmful legacy of the actions of Israel Powell that he has had and continues to have on the Tlaman people. This statement about social awareness, about these truths, assumes that we, as a society, are trying to work towards a common understanding. This makes sense because it is only through agreement about the causes of problems that we can work out how to solve them. If it is true that Israel Powell's actions created a harmful legacy, we would all need to understand that this consisted of, what this consisted of, before we could address it. Over the last three years, however, residents of Powell River have been discouraged from trying to develop this common understanding. Those who try to correct misinformation are shouted down and told that they are racist and white supremacists. This is what happened to a number of Powell River residents on June 1, 2022, at the open-mic session put on by the Joint Working Group. For the Joint Working Group, however, the truth already has been found, and its job is to educate residents until they accept it. But this is not how we develop a common understanding. The pursuit of truth to try to develop the most accurate understanding of. The pursuit of truth to try to develop the most accurate understanding of reality, that is, must be based upon reason, evidence, and logic. This can occur only when one has the ability to hear about all the information that is available and make up one's own mind about its validity. The Joint Working Group has been able to assert its highly contentious views as truth by referring to concepts like epistemic racism. Although most people understand racism, to be believing that a group is inferior because of its biological characteristics and arguing that it should be deprived of rights on this basis, epistemic racism is defined by the B.C. government as, quote, "The positioning of knowledge of one racialized group is superior to another, including the judgment of not only which knowledge is considered valuable, but is considered to be knowledge." Would the Joint Working Group oppose the questioning of an Indigenous knowledge keeper's claims about hundreds of children's bodies being found at Kamloops on the grounds that this constitutes epistemic racism? To state that racism is epistemic, in fact, is to label the challenging of any Indigenous idea as racist. This is a major problem facing the people of Powell River and any possible attempts to get at the truth. Although it is bad enough that false information goes unchallenged because of intimidation, this tactic has even more serious consequences. It encourages Indigenous people to see any disagreement as evidence of hatred, harm, discrimination, and this is false. It is a direct assault on the development of truth needed to achieve reconciliation. Indigenous people need honesty, not condescension and patronization. And many of the things that are happening with respect to discussions of Indigenous people right now, including the use of the Indigenous phonetic alphabet, which is not spoken, Indigenous people had pre-literate languages. And that international phonetic alphabet is the invention of linguists who belong to the Aboriginal industry and rake off millions of dollars to develop this alphabet. This is not helpful to Indigenous people at all and, in fact, deprives the marginalized members of the Indigenous community of the much-needed services such as health, education, and housing. Thank you very much. I would be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Do we have questions of council? Mayor Wasno?
Thank you for your presentation. Is there an opportunity that you might be back in Powell River and have an opportunity to maybe couple with Kate Sutherland and have a community discussion?
Very much so. We had an event yesterday, and we actually had invited Evan Adams to sit with us, but he declined the invitation. And I was very, very happy to hear what Kate Sutherland had to say. And I actually was involved in work about this at Mount Royal University in what was called the Critical Thinking Series, where I invited two speakers to come with different points of view on a question. And we had what was called Critical Thinking facilitators who would try to summarize what each position was before we went to the question-and-answer period. And the person who we modeled our approach on was Peter Boghossian. And I would be happy to sit down with Evan Adams in such a format and try to figure out what our differences were with respect to truth and reconciliation.
Thank you.
Do we have any other questions of council? I wish to thank you so much for coming forward, and thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Vazurdi, I'd invite you to come forward, please.
Good afternoon, council. Ted Zee, Powell River. I'm here to do a delegation in regards to democracy within Powell River and Canada. My delegation starts at this time. And presenting this delegation for me is Dr. Kristin Kramer, who's here in Powell River at this time. Dr. Kramer?
Welcome, Dr. Kramer.
Thank you. Put my glasses on because I'm half-blind now. My name is Kristin Kramer. Thank you very much for allowing me the opportunity to speak today. I have a PhD in criminology and sociolegal studies from the University of Toronto, and some people tell me I'm an internationally recognized expert in my field. I've published in the area of Section 2B, Freedom of Expression Protections, and for many years have taught courses on law and policy related to procedural fairness and human rights. I teach a popular course called Liberalism in the Law and Society Program at the University of Calgary. That course surveys the history of the passage of the hate propaganda provisions in the Criminal Code and its particular provisions in human rights legislation. Between 2013 and 2015, I chaired my department at the University of Winnipeg and was vice president of my faculty association. I have served on or chaired many committees of the university, including Senate Executive, as well as, oh, I might not be able to scroll down, sorry, as well as many other committees of the university. I currently teach part-time at Mount Royal University in the Criminal Justice Program and in the Law and Society Program at the University of Calgary. I am also a director of the Society for Academic Freedom and Scholarship, which is an organization that protects the rights of faculty to express their opinions on matters of public interest. Before moving to Calgary, I lived on Salt Spring Island with my two daughters, and I was reminded, being here today, how beautiful it is to live in this part of the world. I'm here today to speak to you about the proposed changes to your bylaws, the procedural bylaws in particular. I'm here to speak about the changes that are proposed for Section 21 on the public input period, as well as Section 28 delegations. In legal terms, these proposed bylaw amendments are an attempt to limit speech through policy or by way of bylaw. I won't read the entire, in the interest of time, I won't read the entire section of Section 21, but it's the section that's added that begins, "Members of the public who, when providing input, use disrespectful language," and it carries on. So-called disrespectful language, defamatory statements, allegations, inferences, et cetera, although undefined in the policy, are all categories of charter-protected speech. A presiding member of the city of Powell River may not infringe upon the protected expression of residents of Powell River by directing them to apologize, stop speaking, or reject them from a council chamber. This attempt to use a bylaw to intimidate residents into silence during a regular or other council meeting would be an infringement of Section 2B on its face, namely, freedom of thought, belief, opinion, and expression, including freedom of the press and other media of communication. I think you all know that it is trite to say that the Charter of Rights and Freedoms is the law of the land in Canada with respect to the powers of government at all levels. Subject, of course, to certain time, place, and manner restrictions on public input and some limited speech protections on content, for example, threats of violence, municipal governments have been found to have violated Section 2B of the Charter when they seek, through the use of law or policy, to limit the rights of citizens to speak and to be heard in a democratic decision-making process. Any attempt to limit democratic discourse using such vague and subjective categories, including compelling speech in the form of an apology, are a clear and direct violation of a protected Charter right. Insisting that a citizen leave a public space designed for the purposes of democratic governance and discourse may also infringe upon the protections afforded to us under Section 2C, Freedom of Peaceful Assembly. I'd also like to remind council that in 2009, the city of Powell River was subject to an order by the B.C. Supreme Court by way of a ruling issued in the matter of John Dixon versus Powell River. In that ruling, the court clearly stated that the municipality may not sue residents of Powell River for defamation for expressing views in opposition to steps being taken by the city of Powell River. The same principle applies to attempts at suppressing dissent through bylaw amendments. Citing Section 2B of the Charter of Rights and Freedoms, which protects against restrictions on speech content, that court ruled that the defendant, and I'm quoting, "The defendant, City of Powell River, lacks any legal basis or right to bring civil proceedings for defamation of its governing reputation, or bring other proceedings of similar purpose or effect, or to threaten to do so," including in the manner contained in the three letters dated March 6, 2008, sent by solicitors of the defendant, City of Powell River, to Patricia Aldsworth, Winslow Brown, and Noel Hopkins, described in the amended statement of claim, et cetera. The court went on to say, "It is antithetical to the notion of freedom of speech and a citizen's right to criticize his or her government concerning its governing functions, that such criticism should be chilled by the threat of a suit in defamation." In other words, democratic decision-making depends upon the free and open debate of public issues and the freedom to criticize the rich, the powerful, and those such as elected officials who exercise power and authority in our society. Debate on matters of the public interest will often be heated, and criticism will often carry a sting, and yet, open discussion is the lifeblood of democracy. That was a statement from your B.C. Supreme Court in R.V. Capito from 1987. They go on to say that, quote, "If these exchanges are stifled, democratic government itself is threatened." In the time I have remaining, I will speak quickly to the proposed amendment to Section 28 on delegations. That amendment proposes to apply the respectful workplace policy to the residents of Powell River through the extension of an employment policy called Respectful Workplace and Prevention of Harassment, Bullying, and Discrimination Council Policy Number 248. Unfortunately, it's become more common amongst political actors seeking to shut down discussion and debate to use these respectful workplace policies as a cover for censorship. Council could be engaging in duplicitous abuse of power by weaponizing a human resources policy to shut down residents who disagree with proposed changes, such as the name change, by threatening to apply punitive measures against residents of the city of Powell River who express political opinions with which they disagree. Experts refer to this abuse of power as lawfare, or, in this case, policyfare. The Collins Dictionary defines lawfare as "the strategic use of legal proceedings to intimidate or hinder an opponent." It's also arguably a form of harassment prohibited by the city's very respectful workplace policy when one attempts to impose a policy on residents to whom it does not apply. Residents offering input at council meetings are not employees of the city of Powell River. This is a human resources policy that is an artifact of government, which is also subject to the Charter protections I have discussed above. Citizens of Powell River, when exercising their democratic rights in a public forum designed specifically for political input and debate, should not be impeded by such policies. And I'll end there because I'm out of time. Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you. Do we have any questions of our delegate? Mayor Wasno, go ahead.
Thank you for sharing your views of this today. Would you know if there's a municipality in Canada that has grappled with some of the issues just presented and ended up with a procedural bylaw that was well-accepted by their citizens?
That impose restrictions on speech content?
No, just address the issue is, in a bylaw, what is a bylaw that reflects the charters and the freedom of the speech? So that we would have a model of one which has been obviously worked through carefully...
So I would say, sorry if I'm interrupting, so I would say one that provides reasonable restrictions on time, manner, and place input only. Municipalities all across the country have been sued, so I'm familiar with the lawsuits, for attempting to limit the input in democratic forums such as this.
And is there a municipality that you might point us to that you think has gone through this process and ended up with...
Well, your own municipalities' procedural bylaws are fine as they are. You have time, manner, and place restrictions. The mayor has the power to remove disruptive members from the council chamber, has the power to remove council members if they become disruptive. That's all set out in the community charter. So you already have the powers to maintain peace, order, and good government, but what you do not have the power to do, in my opinion, is limit the speech of residents, particularly on contentious issues.
Thank you.
Any other questions of council? Counselor Paul?
Thank you, sir, the chair. I again want to thank you for being here today. Your wisdom and knowledge on this topic is timely. We're dealing with our new procedure bylaw that's being presented to the public today. This question was on our citizens' and my mind prior to it coming forward today because I've asked for a legal opinion. And with your background, I'm sure we're getting some very good perspective and legal advice on the issues that we're confronting. So I want to thank you for being here. Noted the sections that we need to take a good look at, but in your vast amount of experience on this topic, have you ever run into a council that has denied a citizen to speak?
I haven't, but I'm sure that councils have denied the rights of citizens to speak. The issue is whether or not that denial is legal. And I should just qualify, I'm not giving you legal advice, I'm giving you information based on my research and writing. But I would welcome you getting a legal opinion on these kinds of questions. The issue really relates to the purpose of a public forum such as this. And the purpose of a public forum such as this is actually to have debate, to actually, in some cases, fight it out, right? People with whom we disagree say things that often sting, as the court has said. As a university professor, I am subject to all kinds of criticism from students. Students have the right to express those opinions, even though those criticisms sometimes sting, offend, and hurt my feelings. But I do not have the right to punish them through grades. I do not have the right to punish them through the imposition of workplace policies, and I do not have the right to exact any kind of policy or lawfare revenge on them for expressing their opinion, because that's the nature of the relationship. And the nature of the relationship between council and residents is similar. Residents are not employees. They are not subject to your workplace policies. They have a right as citizens to express their opinions that is protected by the Charter of Rights and Freedoms.
Again, thank you for your answers, and thank you very much for being here today.
Thank you.
Okay, so, excuse me. Okay, so, excuse me. We have Counselor Almeida. We're not done with you yet.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. Would you agree that it is possible for two people to have a conversation, two people that disagree on a topic, to have a conversation in a polite, respectful manner?
Of course, and you can insist upon parliamentary decorum.
Totally, which happens, I see, when I watch videos of the House of Commons, is if MPs are not parliamentary.
Then one does not say the word "liar," one says...
And if they don't apologize for an unparliamentary comment, they are then ejected from the House of Commons.
But that would be something that governs the two...
No, it doesn't have to be.
Between the two of you.
The bylaws, as they talk about, talk about disrespectful language, defamatory statements. Everything you've said today, I totally agree with. Discussion and discourse can totally happen, but that can also happen in a way, and criticism can happen too. One can criticize someone without being defamatory or disrespectful. The two of them can be separately done and effectively done in communication.
The problem is, is that you don't have a forum in which you have an objective decision-maker to decide that matter.
That's the beauty of the chair. Thank you.
Except that it's still not legal, as the courts have said, because you're limiting the right of citizens to express their opinions.
An opinion positive in a decorum that is general for all, there's sometimes, there's children in this room.
So perhaps what you want to do in your proposed bylaws is say specifically the kind of language that is prohibited, such as, say, swearing, but defamation, you've already been told through, by the B.C. courts, that you cannot sue for defamation, and they're crystal clear on that point. So then, attempting to say defamation through a policy is the same thing, you're just doing it by way of a backdoor.
Counselor Southcott.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Dr. Kramer, for presenting to us. Would have been nice to have a little bit of advance warning, so, or, you know, so we could be more aware of your background and to appreciate what you're presenting to us. However, it is very specific. I would also, so I have a question. It's based on the community charter defines the purpose of a council like this to be good governance amongst a few other things. Good governance means, to me, and I think it would be generally understood to mean, an outcome that is more than simply giving audience to possibly conflicting views. In other words, debate, argument, fighting, whatever, is actually can happen here. And I have supported dynamic and diverse conversations in this chamber because it isn't really happening publicly in a whole lot of other places over the past couple of years in this community around some of the most contentious issues facing this community right now. So, however, getting back to the purpose of good governance, good governance has as its result an outcome that furthers the best interests of the community, and I think that there are few in this community who wouldn't agree that we want to see constructive outcome, and that means working together, as far as I'm concerned, in a big, that's a big part of it. Right now, we have a lot of division and not a lot of working together right within our community, let alone between our community and La Amanation. So we have a couple of major issues that, if you were to judge this point in history, we could see we have some failure, but this is only one point, and we can continue on. Now, you have addressed ways that you don't see as acceptable in terms of limitation on free speech, and I definitely respect Charter 2B particularly. There is also possibly the possibility of limiting repetition. So we've heard quite a bit of repetition, in my view, of particular views. Some education I was engaged in with SFU, Center for Dialogue, suggested that if a particular view is expressed too much, it can take over the dialogue, and that is not useful for a constructive outcome either. So can you comment? Repetition, I think, is something that we could limit legitimately. Could you comment on any other ways you can see that might allow us to proceed to actually a constructive outcome, not just the dialogue that you clearly are advocating for?
Well, time, manner, and place restrictions already exist, including repetition. Repetition on questions in council is prohibited in certain instances as well by the community charter. So you have that tool available to you. What I would say is that if you are truly interested in dialogue, you don't start by proposing amendments to procedures bylaws that shut down that dialogue through the use of vague language about vague statements that are clearly violations of the Charter of Rights and Freedoms. And it's not just me saying it, it is your own courts in B.C. that are saying this with respect to those kinds of actions, if you like. So it's your own courts that are telling you this. Your own courts are saying you cannot limit the speech of citizens in a democratic forum such as this. You can absolutely, in order to get business done, limit time, manner, and place, or put time, manner, and place restrictions, which would include repetition, of course, in order to facilitate decision-making. But you can't interfere with the content of citizen's speech if they have not expressed that opinion clearly, right, to you in a forum that you have created. And I think there's a difference there between what's being proposed in the procedural bylaws amendments and what you're talking about in terms of repetition. Because you've used language like defamation, slander, and so on and so forth, and those are all very well-trodden phrases that have been used throughout history to censor one's political opponents or to censor dissidents from the received opinions. So creating a structure is important, I agree with you, but you can't create a structure in which you have a judge, jury, and executioner sitting in a chair in a council chamber that is making a decision about the content of speech.
Just to follow up to this, I hear what you're saying we can't do, but do you have any suggestions as far as what we can do? In other words, positive movement towards actually working together, something that facilitates a constructive outcome instead of just shutting down, you know?
Yes.
Looking for positives, not the negatives.
That's not a matter...
Lots of negatives.
Yes, I agree, and that's not a matter for procedures bylaws. That's a different matter. That's a matter that, you know, Kate Sutherland's presentation addressed today. That's a question of building opportunities, real, meaningful opportunities for dialogue, and they don't necessarily have to happen in council chamber.
Thank you.
Thank you, Doctor. I think we have to move along now. Thank you so much. That brings us to correspondence. We might take a brief pause as, yeah, yeah, we'll pause for a moment. We'll give it. Excuse me, the person swearing in the back, you're gonna have to go. I think we just can't be having folks swear, and I think...
A way to increase air in here, like if you open this.
I don't think there's anything to hold off where it's open.
Minister? It was my intention to gather a list of... Yeah, I thought I would gather.
Are we in recess? I haven't actually heard anything. I'm unclear of what's going on right now.
So anyway, I thought we could talk about, talk about the list of...
You know, Evan Adams is in the audience, eh? Evan Adams? The guy we were talking about upstairs, about coming in.
Excuse me, counsel, are we in recess right now? I have not heard... Chair, are we in recess?
Yes, Counselor Isaacson.
For how long?
Are we good to go, people? Okey-dokey. I'd like to bring this meeting back to order. If please, people could seat themselves, that would be wonderful. We are on correspondence. We have two letters on the agenda. What is, is counsel wishing to address any of the correspondence? Counselor Almeida?
I don't want to jump ahead, I have a question about 4.2, but if we want to deal with 4.1 first, then I can wait.
Does anybody want to speak to 4.1, or Counselor Dout?
I wonder if staff have anything to say in response to Mr. Rubain's letter and 4.1.
So, Director Gao, sorry.
Through the chair to Counselor Dout. I won't speak specifically to the letter, I will just point out that June 6th, draft amendment bylaw 2746 was given three readings, and to date, the applicant has met two of the five subject conditions. We're waiting on the final three subject conditions to be met before we can bring back that amendment bylaw to counsel for consideration of adoption.
That's it? Good? All right. Anybody else want to ask? Counselor Almeida?
Thank you, Chair. In regards to the letter to 4.2, I guess I'll direct it back to Director Gao, just a little background on the property, as there's three properties that seem to have a road allowance and none of the neighboring properties do, so, please.
Through the chair to Counselor Almeida. So if I understand correctly, you're just looking for a little bit of background on the request that came in directly to counsel in relationship to the landowner who's looking to purchase road dedication back from the city. The land was dedicated as a road in 1981, when the three properties that were part of that subdivision were subdivided. Approving Officer of the Day envisioned a secondary road parallel to Manson Avenue that has never come to fruition. As you can see, there's no further road dedication beyond. Counsel could direct staff to move forward with the process related to road closure and removal of highway dedication. That process does have requirements for notice. It is a bylaw that counsel adopts. There would be costs associated with staff time, as well as notification, so again, a public notice, as per Section 94 of the community charter that requires we publish twice in a newspaper. We don't currently have a process for dealing with this type of application because it's not one we see very often. That's to say, we have gone through it before. Some of you may recall the road dedication that the city sold to a landowner developing land in and around Choice Avenue closer to Cascade. It was a portion of undeveloped Cascade Road. So there is a process. It does take staff time, as I mentioned, and it does have some costs associated with it. In the case of the Cascade Road, there was benefit to the city in the sense that this applicant was going to develop and has moved forward on developing a series of rental apartments that he currently rents to members of the community. In the letter that's on the agenda, the applicant did speak to wanting to build a carriage house in that location, and they are correct. Servicing across road dedication can be quite difficult, as you can imagine. You have private services running across public lands. I think the question for counsel is really to decide whether or not you want to direct staff, specifically planning staff, to spend time on an initiative that would benefit one property owner, as opposed to some of the work that we're doing that is benefiting multiple property owners, especially when there's not an application fee associated with something of this nature. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, Director Gao, if counsel is interested in supporting this person trying to move forward, would there be something you need from us? Should we be asking for something?
Through the chair to the chair, Counselor Elliott. Yeah, we would need direction from counsel to essentially include this in our work plan. This would be additional work, and the question I'm posing to you is, it's prioritizing. If you would like staff to spend time on this initiative, then that is taking away time that we're spending on other initiatives. And I do point out that this would benefit one property owner in our community. I'm not suggesting that... I'm not suggesting that it's a horrible idea. And in fact, there's lots of undeveloped pieces of road dedication throughout our community that, again, back to an era of an approving officer who had vision for a road network that never came to fruition. There might be benefit at some point in future of looking at all of those road dedications and and starting to reach out to property owners to see if they'd be interested in in purchasing those lands. But this is a good example where the three properties of the three properties, only one property owner is actually interested in purchasing it back. And so you may also learn that it's not that valuable for many property owners that either live adjacent to or in this case have property that's hooked around road dedication.
Okay. Anybody else on the committee? Counselor Palm?
Just through the chair, I'm going to seek a little clarification. Previously, the developer had applied for single or family or duplexes on this piece of property. Would he still be facing the same hurdles if he had proceeded along that line?
Sorry, Counselor Palm, are you talking about 4.1 or 4.2?
Sorry?
We were on 4.2?
Oh, sorry.
So is your question about 4.2 or?
No, it's in regards to 4.1. I thought we were on 4.1.
Oh, no, we we went past 4.1 because we had an answer about what had happened. Did you want to ask a question about 4.1?
No.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Amida.
Thank you, Chair. Director Gao, you said there's a few other properties that are similar to this across the city without maybe having to dive in. Do you know a ballpark number as to you think how many might be similar situations?
Through the chair to Counselor Amida. Sorry, I don't. I just know from, you know, the work that I do, often we find these remnant pieces of undeveloped road dedication, again, in some cases dating back many decades. Purview of a previous approving officer.
Counselor Southcott, and then we'll hear from the mayor.
I support the idea of closing this road, but I don't support the idea of distracting planning staff from priorities. So I wonder if there's a possibility of putting this task on a list of and then so that it's included, like in terms of intention. For maybe a better time when you have more staff capacity, which may be however long in the future. You know, I'm trying to figure out. Accommodate both.
Through the chair to Counsel Southcott, I would like to echo the concerns of planning staff, and I see that counsel recognizing that. We have many strategic priorities that you set for us around really forwarding many, many units of housing development. And I think that while we could add this, this could be in terms of our current capacity, two, three years possibly down the road. So should counsel want us to pursue this one, we would drop off some of the other priorities that you've put forward to us on perhaps more strategic. And it's not to say that the letter writer doesn't have a valid concern for their own property. But we are looking at so many much more bigger impact pieces that you've directed us to do. So while we can add it to a list, I think realistically, looking at what I see, this is something that would be two to three years. And then at the same time, that depends on additional priorities counsel comes forward to us with. Thank you.
Mayor Wasnow, and then we'll come back to you.
I just wanted clarity. So you do not view this the same way you would a permit application? And if if you do view it differently, would there be a cost that you could apply to this to facilitate it being done sooner rather than later?
Through the chair, a year ago, maybe a year and a half ago, we did amend our fees by law to include a statement or a policy around extraordinary circumstances or something to that effect. And this was in keeping with an application that we were potentially going to see, and we wanted to find a way to establish a way to essentially create a fee associated with work. And so we likely do have a way to apply it. Unfortunately, that in itself, it was established for a much bigger process. And the time just involved in actually establishing that fee, coming back to counsel, engaging counsel on what an appropriate fee is, could also be seen as taking staff time and cumbersome. I think I wouldn't try and convey to you this staff time is the biggest concern in terms of cost. I think it's just in terms of priorities. That is the biggest issue for staff right now.
Thank you.
Counselor Amida.
Thank you. I echo Counselor Southcott's comments. I don't want to necessarily add more to planning staff's plate. And at the same time, it also sounds like the director feel it, you know, it doesn't look like the city's going to have much plans for these this road allowance. Are there alternatives to selling the land that could be administratively easier? I don't know if a lease of a road allowance is putting my foot in my mouth. Or is there something or a TUP? Is there something that could be an alternative that would allow staff to execute some a solution and then we can tackle it on a bigger, broader scale down the road when we don't have as many things on the go?
Through the chair to Counselor Amida. Unfortunately, something like a lease requires that same process. So you're raising title, you're creating title. In the case of road dedication where it's a property owner adjacent, you're then immediately amalgamating it with the existing property. So it doesn't alleviate the need to close the road and undedicate it by way of bylaw and public notice. Same process.
Okay, thank you. Seeing no further questions, we could move along to number five, official community plan. Mr. Gao. Oh, sorry. Ms. Ferguson.
Good afternoon, Chair, Mayor, and Counsel. Thank you for having me. The purpose of this report is to provide you with an update on the official community plan and also to seek counsel direction on the official community plan timeline. So in terms of an update on the official community plan, I want to assure you that staff have been working diligently on progress for the official community plan. Staff have met with our counterparts in other governments as well as talking to colleagues in the province in different areas that might be affected by the work we do with the OCP. We've also done a fair amount of background research on current effective practices with official community plans in order to more fully build out the work plan and understand the scope of work. So plant a seed in the future that you'll see a report from us that more in detail talks about what the official community plan will tackle, specifically the kind of studies that we're going to undertake. So plant that seed that you'll see that later. What we're coming to talk to you about today is about the timeline for the official community plan. So there's been three major factors that are delaying our our ability to deliver the official community plan according to the timeline that we presented to you in October of last year. The first is that there's been major changes in planning legislation, and they are time bound. Quite impactful changes that we've had to dedicate substantial amounts of staff time to. So for example, we need to complete a housing needs reports by the end of this calendar year. And in the next calendar year, update our OCP and zoning bylaw to reflect those changes. That means looking at our 20-year housing projection and coming up with land use designations and zones that show how we're going to accommodate growth. And that's going to take a lot of work. The second is that through our background research, we've identified there are additional studies that need to be required. So you will see in the future more information about the additional studies. But the important point is is that it's going to take us more time to complete those studies so that community conversations could be based on information, factual information about whether it's the environment or our infrastructure or growth management options. The third is that I'll be honest with you, staff are not adequately equipped right now to have a good dialogue-based community engagement about the 20-year future of our community. An official community plan is successful when we can start first from first principles of where we agree, what we value most about our community today, and then go into challenging conversations about balancing priorities, balancing options and directions. So with the division that's in the community at the moment is very challenging to have a values-based conversation. So staff are presenting a stretched out timeline where the proposal is that community engagement in in 2025 primarily is about here's what local government does, here's what municipal government does, here's the purpose of an official community plan. Here's how an official community plan manages growth. Then staff will also tackle our provincial requirements for the housing needs report. Then there's municipal elections that take place in 2026. At that time, the there's a public opinion poll related to the name change that's anticipated to be occurring at the same time. And then afterwards, we have a community conversation about those really important options and directions, dialogue-based conversations that require a lot of facilitation and a lot of staff support. So happily answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Ferguson. Do we have questions from counsel? So do we have, are you saying Counselor Isaacson? Okay, I'll take Counselor Isaacson, then Counselor Dout.
Thank you. One question. Provincial legislation requires an OCP update by December 31st, 2025. And so without, what sort of public engagement do you see informing that update? And what 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 would that update contain, do you think? I'm trying to understand what would be done if we're pausing the if we might pause the rest of the overall process.
Yeah, through the chair to Counselor Isaacson. Thank you for that question. The the way that staff can manage that in the timeline given is that we're statutory required to have early and ongoing engagements prior to a public hearing for the adoption of an official community plan. We would propose limiting the community engagement to growth and growth management only to inform land uses. So an official community plan is quite expansive. Yeah, a 20-year vision of our community, our priority for meeting the the provincial targets would be putting some density numbers against our land use designations and demonstrating how our land use designations are accommodating growth. But we're not necessarily having a substantive conversation about is this the best way to manage growth in a way that a comprehensive OCP update can have, if that makes sense?
Thank you.
So Dout?
Oh, you know, I've read through the report and it's, there's a lot of action in that report. But when we boil it down, what you're asking us to do today is to approve Phase One of the action, which is basically to do those intergovernmental relationships and come up with a high-level idea of how to go forward by the end of 2024. That's longer than I would have liked to see, and I think longer than a lot of people in the community would like to see. But I just want to point out, you know, right in the first page of the report, under impacts to the OCP update timeline. Now, what it says is it is anticipated that the community's uncertainty and division stemming from the proposed name change process may negatively impact staff's ability to safely and respectfully host community conversations about the future of our city. I'm not arguing with that. I share those concerns. But you know, if people are wondering why we might need to look at the procedure bylaw that the city has, one of those things is to make sure that staff can safely and respectfully be be participants in community conversations about what counsel does. And by extension of that, how the official community plan. So I just want to point out that staff is recognizing that the division in the community about the name change is causing delay in other work that many of us would like to see happen. And say that perhaps we will do something in the procedure bylaw to make that safety a little bit stronger.
Did we have any other questions before we move to the motions? Okay, yes, please. Oh, do you have a question, Counselor Palm? Okay.
I have a question in regard to process and we have brought forward a the mayor's task force has brought forward a couple pieces of the property for review to help us out financially. I believe those two parcels made reference to something had to happen with the OCP. Do both those properties have to go through this process before they can be even considered?
Through the chair to Counselor Palm, I believe you're talking about the the Nooka Street property, the Tofino Street properties.
Yes.
In particular, the Nooka Street property, looking at that one for an OCP amendment. And the motion was that in the next time the OCP is amended. Any change to the official community plan map is required to go through those statutory approvals processes, which is early and ongoing engagement, and then a public hearing.
Safe to say, nothing could be done with those pieces of property until 2028?
Through the chair, unless it was wrapped in with the the tactical meeting, our provincial requirements change that's required with the housing needs. But we could be muddying the waters a little bit there.
Okay, Mayor Wasnow, go ahead.
Thank you. So I'm trying to understand the significance of the difference of opinions in Powell River about a potential name change to completing a official community plan, which to a large extent stipulates where developments can take place. And I would hate to see that that work would be impeded by something which could be five years, 10 years down the line. So can you explain a little bit more about why you think we can't proceed to deal? Maybe our CAO is going to address that.
Through the chair, planning had quite extensive discussions with me on this. And one of the things we're seeing is a number of things. One is we have very limited bandwidth. We know that you've given that priority of having an OCP done as your strategic priorities during your term. And the reality we're seeing is that going out a full OCP review, not the interim one that the province requires by 2025, typically involves very in-depth engagement on values related to climate change, things around reconciliation, all the different components that community well health and well-being that are way beyond land use and that are under the act you're able to consider. And so looking at the temperature out there and the types of meetings, it is quite likely that the meetings could easily be turned into value-based conversations that get linked to the name change. One of the big concerns, quite frankly, is the safety of staff when they are. And I understand that even before my time with you, that there was a particular series of public meetings around a land use process that resulted in a lot of hostility towards staff, to the point where I actually got feedback from citizens who were at that meeting who said, you must never let that happen to your staff again. I mean, I granted I wasn't present. So there are ways of addressing the interim direction from the committees. Counsel can do small OCP amendments one at a time, depending on or part of a framework for an interim with the two properties I think you're both referring to. But this wider scale piece is something that there were some communities, for example, who put their OCP processes on pause because of different opinions about vaccinations, like very high contentious things in the community where they decided it wasn't safe for their staff to go out so that meetings weren't. for their staff to go out so that meetings weren't intended for one purpose and turning out to be another. The OCP process could be a wonderful opportunity to bring people together, but the climate in our community is not quite there. That's my belief in the eight months I've been here, and so I strongly do support the recommendation that's been put forward to. You may decide differently and direct us otherwise, and that's fine, and we will follow through. But it was really important that we have this conversation with you so that you knew where we were at, and that we've given you also an option. I will say it's almost the dream of a planner to start off conversations with community about what does local government do? And so people have a strong understanding and what is the role in land use. So we can have that level of engagement, get through the election, any directions council has around polls and things like that, and then pick up that more values-based piece once the community understands what is the purpose of an OCP, what is the breadth it can cover. So, you know, we put it before you, it's your will to direct us, and so I'll pause there. Thank you.
The chair, may I just have a follow-up?
Yeah, go ahead.
So have you considered to address the issues of staff to have consultants run the processes and approach the Ministry of Indigenous Affairs or people within the planning associated with communities and said, "This is what we see as a reality in our community, and we would like a $50,000 grant to facilitate the use of experienced consultants to do this"?
Through the chair, there was consideration of that approach. We haven't granted, asked for additional money beyond the budget we have. So some pros and cons to that. I have a fair bit of experience working with consultants. It still involves staff, it still involves staff oversight and involvement. And one of the downsides of letting consultants run things without staff present is that the OCP is a document that staff have to own, it's one that they have to implement on behalf of the direction of community and council. And if it is divorced, done by an external entity without that close involvement of staff, there can be a disconnect. So my experience, the more successful ones where both council and staff own it, because the implementation is really critical, is where there's a dovetail with heavy staff and also council involvement. The more successful ones I've seen have had council members engaging the community. Ideally, it's a fun uplifting process, it's something that brings people together, something that is, you know, community building. I'm of the view that the process is equally important to the outcome, and the concern I see and I hear from staff is that it will be very difficult for us to have a smooth process during this current climate. So that's what I will say. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I have a question, and then we'll get to some motions. So this scaled-back version that we're proposing for a timeline today to get to our legislative requirements also includes the community education aspects that would set the groundwork for further OCP process beyond that. Are there budget savings with this timeline that help us with anything beyond that, or is it mainly a staff time issue?
Through the chair, it's mainly a staff time issue. What we're proposing in the revised engagement plan is that staff would go out to community events in 2025 with that information material, and it would give us more time to do the background studies as well.
Do we have any other questions, or should we move to the motion? I would entertain a motion at this time. Councilor South Scott?
I move that members of the committee direct staff to proceed with the comprehensive official community plan update as outlined in the June 2024 engagement plan and attached to the July 9, 2024 agenda.
Seconded by Councilor Almeida, do we have comments? Go ahead, Councilor South.
Thank you. In 2013, I seem to remember, and 2014, there was an OCP rewrite that went on. And what it lacked spectacularly, in my view, was exactly what is being proposed here. In other words, giving the community really a chance to participate meaningfully. I think back then, the community had no idea how to really participate meaningfully in an official community plan, which is probably the most powerful document for a community to influence in the destiny of our community. So I deeply appreciate this proposal, and I think taking the time that is suggested here is exactly what we need. We need a process where we can, we can work together on vision and in this community, in this time that we're in right now. So I really appreciate what's being presented here, and I wholeheartedly support it, obviously.
You had your hand up, right? No? Any other comments on this motion? Councilor Isakson?
Thank you, Chair. I think for me, the two, I appreciate the awareness of kind of the state of the emotions in our community. I don't think that's going to be resolved at the next provincial election. I feel like society as a whole is in a really sensitive place, and whether it's name change or COVID or the economy, we're in a place right now where emotions are really high, and it's, and I think we have to find a way through to get to meaningful conversation. And I think some of the most powerful conversations that help people bridge differences, as Kate Sutherland shared earlier, is to have conversations about, about some values and understanding ourselves. So I realize that work is very hard, but to me, I think what also is very true is staff were, you know, sidelined by provincial legislation and changes and all of the requirements that you had to get through a lot by June this year, and that, that meant that other things were put on hold. And so, and also the needs for, or you mentioned the more technical studies. So I appreciate that. This doesn't mean you're stopping the process, you're doing the work on the background studies and also doing public education on OCP, which I think sets the ground for better engagement in the future, because it sounds like the reality is either way, because of some of the challenges in time, for example, with provincial legislation, we're just not going to get the OCP a full update until after the provincial election, no matter what. And so what does it look like to do it in a good way and make sure that we're still doing robust engagement? I feel like the motion speaks to that. And so one thing that I do also want to say is, you know, emotions are high in community right now, but I also think that there are many people in this community who are able to engage in meaningful discussion, who are either able to separate themselves from that or don't have high emotions on the topic. And so I don't want to, I don't want to indicate that my vote is based on being polled by people who are very vocal in our community. I feel like we have a lot of, the majority of people in this community are able to have meaningful conversations that are valuable to the OCP process. So my, my vote, which will likely be in support of this motion, is more to address the realities of staff had to, you know, drop things and focus on legislative requirements, and also the, some of the technical studies that you referenced, and that that work can continue between now and the next election. So, thank you.
Thank you. So I'll speak a little bit. I can't say I'm not a little disappointed at the delays and not getting to where we wanted to talk about things like climate change and making, you know, some significant changes to our OCP that would address our future. And I, you know, prefer to get there faster, but I do understand that the recommendation is based on some well-thought-out ideas, and given the capacity we have and what we can accomplish with what we have. And I do like that we're going to get out there and start doing that community education and setting the groundwork, and that will also give us a way to gauge how well we can communicate in these types of forum, and perhaps we might see us moving forward in a better way once we have more information in that regard. I do think we, we have significant changes we need to make to our OCP, and I'm disappointed with this. But I will be in favor of the motion because I don't know that I, that forging ahead with the, or swimming upstream is necessarily the best use of our resources either. So, thank you. I will call the questions. All in favor of the motion? Any opposed? That is unanimous. Thank you. That brings us to six, which is community engagement reports from counselors. Maybe we will start on the computer. Councilor Isakson?
I'm so sorry, I was so focused on the next agenda item that I completely skipped thinking about community engagement reports, so you can pass me.
Not a problem. Councilor Palm?
Yeah, I'm in the same ballpark as Councilor Isakson, not focused on the community report at this time. Thank you.
Well, this is going to be the fast one. Mayor Wazna?
Thank you. I had a delightful time at the Canada Day celebration. It was nice to see so many people out enjoying themselves in our beautiful city. And the entertainment was great. I loved the kickoff, young band of rock and rollers to all the others. So that was great. I was at the wrap-up to PRISM, where they have a barbecue for all of the individuals that have home-stayed PRISM students and participants. And I was reminded that Arthur Arnold is in his 25th year here in Powell River, and the dedication that he's made to promoting Powell River as an international center of music for people of all ages and the spin-off impact that's had with new community orchestras coming to play. So I just, just want to make that, that note. And just last, I continue my involvement with the compassionate program, which is providing opportunities for parents that have lost sons or daughters to come together and have a way of managing this grief. And the first retreat is going to be held in September, and giving indication of the importance of this within our community. It was basically sold out, use that term, and we're already preparing for a second retreat to accommodate all those that will not be able to attend in September. Thank you.
So, South Scott?
Thank you, Chair. Just one thing I'd like to mention, and that is a celebration of life that was held in Dwight Hall on Saturday for Bruce Long. Definitely a pillar in our community and a big loss, and that was represented by standing room only, and there were people out the doors outside, listening to the proceedings inside. Was a, it truly was a celebration because he was such a fine human being. Yeah, and I felt honored to be there. So that's the one thing I wanted to mention. Thank you, Chair.
Also, Dought?
Yeah, just a couple of short comments. PRISM was great, I attended as many events as I could. Some of them were at the same time as council meetings, but, you know, the workshops and the training sessions were as good as the concerts. And it was amazing to see these first-class musicians from all over the world, some accomplished professionals that are established in their musical trades, and some who were just working their way into symphonies around the world. And how amazing can that be to go and see the concerts that we could see for a $30 ticket? Or in the case of music in the park on the weekend, free music for the community, it was great. It was amazing to see little kids dancing to the symphony music up front, some doing ballet and others doing freestyle kid dancing, but it was a great opportunity to enjoy time. And then there was July 1st, and from a very cold place down by the water, I watched the fireworks. And it's amazing how much the temperature has changed from July 1st to today, but the fireworks were great, and I enjoyed that. And out talking to all the people you bump into when you go to these events. So that's what I was doing the last couple of weeks.
Councilor Almeida?
Thank you, Chair. Five weeks since our last community engagement report, and I feel like I did a lot of things, and yet I probably missed as many things as I also did. So as other councillors have shared, the summer season has brought a lot of festivals. Canada Day was awesome, I was able to also do the PRISM on the beach. I will commend the PRISM team for working with, I believe it's the Let's Talk Trash Team, to also facilitate great recycling and composting during the PRISM on the Beach Festival. But I also went to PRISM on the Kids, my kids had a blast, and Arthur did a great job, but even Sonia Zagman, the children's coordinator at the library, did a fantastic job there as well. So my kids will continue to enjoy that one. A couple of committee meetings in my roles with tourism and library board, but also had a chance to be a part of the LIFT 40th anniversary a few weeks ago at Willingham Beach and Pacific Coast also had a grand opening ceremony when the airport reopened, and had a large $40,000 donation to the Source Club that they had given as a result of a golf tournament they organized in the city, that the Source Club is one of three partner charitable organizations that they support in their, in their home basis. And so that was a big contribution there. VIU is going through a large engagement process in terms of how to just make themselves a little bit better and more prominent in the community, so I had a chance to be a part of that engagement session. And then on the first day of summer was also Indigenous Peoples' Day, and that was a fantastic event my family enjoyed, and a great job by our Friends of the Nation to open it out for the whole community to be part of. And the day after that, my coworker also did an ALS walk, and I've had a family member pass from ALS, and that walk was, I think we had almost 55 or 60 people out, some great community support with some sponsors and donations, and they raised almost $9,000 that they raised to the ALS Society as well. And lastly, I did a 3D printing session at the library, which if people don't know, we have a 3D printer in the library, and you can go take a session for about 30 to 40 minutes, they'll walk you through the process. And then if you want to just learn about 3D printing, or you got a widget that you'd like to make, and plastic might be the way to do it, it's an easy way to get in and give it a shot. I haven't had a chance to print anything yet, but look forward to dabbling with that and making up a little widget to use around the house. That's everything.
Thank you, everyone. So I'm going to try to make my report fairly brief. I did attend a community action team meeting on June 21st, 24th, and Dr. Moti Katla was there, and she reviewed our statistics for our area, and it appears we are not doing that well. We are on track for being similar to previous year, which was our record year for our area for toxic drug poisoning crises. So that wasn't a good message to hear, but we do have But we do have um, you know, some positives, uh, drug testing results. Drug testing does seem to be having um, you know, positive impacts. We are seeing um, things in our Cethet region that are better because of the drug testing versus areas that do not have the drug testing. Um, I wanted people to know that August is um, the uh, overdose drug um, death awareness month. And people can um, talk to the community action team if they wish for their places of business or organizations to participate in drug awareness month. And we can add them to the calendar and promote other people's events that are affiliated with that. So if you are um, a nonprofit or a community organization and you wish to um, have an event that helps promote awareness, then they would promote that along with the entire monthly calendar for that. Um, we have, I also met with um, Michelle Hannah and she brought with her Elizabeth Holliday, who is um, the uh, director, I think, in charge of um, uh, I'm sorry, the, the name of the exact, actual title has escaped me. The Substance Use Recovery um, Director. And we discussed um, um, services in Cethet. And we had um, some very positive uh, indications that uh, they were looking to work to, toward increasing facilities here and wanted to work with us. So I thought that was, was a good um, match. I discussed and asked about um, the provincial response to uh, the safety of clients, people in hospitals with the um, response to uh, use possession in the hospital setting. They indicated new changes to laws. We're going to be making that less of an issue than they had been in the past. And so the media splash from the Northern Health uh, area that caused concern in our community and was the reason I was following up, seems to be there is a provincial um, response, province um, task force being run by Dr. Penny, what was Dr. Penny? Yeah. So she is going to be heading up a task, a task force to help address that provincewide. And we um, will get results from that forthwith. And um, the ER Reno are near, are pretty much done in the ER of our hospital. The detox beds, while not officially open, are doing some piloting. And so it looks to be that they will be fully operational soon, which is excellent because detox beds within our own community will certainly help. Um, the uh, hospital site master planning will not start this year. It's going to be next year. So um, that, that was the news on that front. I also um, where's the other one? Attended obviously the Indigenous Days out at Koha Man. I thought it was a wonderful event. I was particularly um, happy to see recognition of their fire department peoples throughout the years. That uh, and the um, recognition of their new fire chief, uh, Byron Harry, who's also my son-in-law. So I was very proud of him. And so I enjoyed that event very much. I had lots of grandkids and kids and we all had a really good day. So I also managed to go on a vacation and was out of town for the last 10 days. And I just got back last night. So um, that's my report for today. Which brings us to 7.1, the procedure bylaw review. And so we, I expect us to be doing quite a bit of work on this procedure bylaw. Um, my thought was we could uh, do a, a round and folks could identify sort of the topic areas that they wanted to discuss within the procedure bylaw. We could create a small list or big list, whatever it may be, and then go through the list and speak about each of them one at a time and hopefully have motions to address our concerns as far as amendments to the bylaw. And once we are finished with our list, we could proceed with a motion to have staff adopt our revisions and come back to us if council is okay with that process. Anybody have comments on the process?
I'd like to talk about it, but if you just want to get us going, then I'll put my hand up and talk about what I'd like to see. How does that work?
Okay. Um, Counselor Paul.
I just a question through the chair for clarification. Um, obviously.
Can you use the mic Counselor Paul? Just point of privilege here. I can't hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Yep.
Okay, sorry. So uh, now that the document is public, uh, we have gotten a lot of comments coming forward from the public and emails and a whole range of items that uh, have shed new light on developments in terms of our new uh, procedure bylaw. So what I would like to ask staff is the process that we're following, could you please outline the process, the timeline, and where the public input uh, comes into effect?
Uh, through the chair, the um, the process is still a little bit up to council. So at this time, you're speaking about, um, you're discussing edits, changes, uh, what have you to the draft that you have in front of you. However many meetings that takes, once you refer it to the bylaw adoption process, it would go to a meeting for first and second reading. It's at that time that um, the public notices put out um, for two weeks. Um, in the paper, uh, the paper is just what we're legislatively required to do, but we would, we put it out on all of our um, all of our resources. So social media, our website, um, the, the notice board. Folks can come in person to provide um, feedback or questions. Um, and they have that time to provide any of that to council, although they can, they don't have to wait for that public notice period. They can be doing that at any time, which you've seen they have been doing. Um, so once that two-week period is, is up, um, it would come to council for a third reading. And that, at that point, council can make changes to the bylaw still. And, and, and then once it's where you want it to be, you can give it, uh, read it a third time and then, and then adopt it. So the timeline is, is dependent on, you know, if council wants to refer it back to staff for more changes or have another meeting or workshop session or what have you about it. So um, yeah, timeline is, it will vary a little bit.
I appreciate, appreciate your comments. And just to clarify for the public, um, their opportunity for input, could you just describe that one, once more?
Uh, through the chair, they're able to uh, come to City Hall to do that in person. They can email, they can phone, um, they can mail in, snail mail. I guess that's still a thing some folks do. Um, anyway, they, they're able to get in touch with, with staff or council. They're welcome to.
So there is no public engagement or public forum for them or for input, correct?
There's no public hearing.
Uh, through the chair, there's not, there's not a, a public hearing, so to speak. But um, uh, anytime the item is on the agenda, folks can ask questions um, at the question period at every meeting.
Thank you.
Okay, Counselor Dout, go ahead.
Yeah, so I'll jump right in. As Counselor, the Chair, Counselor Elliott, has asked counselors for their position on what they'd like to do. Uh, and, and the absence of a recommendation right now, what I would like to do is at the end of our discussion about this, make a motion to take the draft bylaw amended, however we might choose to amend it, to first reading at some point. Maybe the August meeting, maybe the September meeting. You have plenty of opportunity for public input to a bylaw that didn't just come to people's attention yesterday, but has been under discussion by city council at workshops and through drafts since March of 2023. Didn't just come up yesterday. So how are we going to do that? First off, there's things I think I would like to see added. I have a draft bylaw that was, was in the package. And it shows some highlighted changes from a previous draft. It doesn't show any highlighted changes from the original 2015 bylaw. And that is causing some consternation to people because they are asking to have more information on what has actually been changed. So when, if, if we do decide to move it to first reading, I would like to see that when that information comes out to the public, that the, the meeting minutes and the meeting agenda have included a red line agreement or a red line document that shows all of the changes from the existing 2015 bylaw to the new proposed bylaw, whatever it might be. There are things I would like to discuss about changing. Okay. First one is item 16. And it said, and I would like, there's language in there about a prescribed acknowledgement of, of uh, territory, prescribed territorial announcement as it is, or acknowledgement. And I would like to see that language changed. Uh, there just to say in that, in that paragraph and on the proposed agenda, that there be a territorial acknowledgement. Different people can do that in different ways. But I would like to see that rather than the language imposed in this draft. Under 18-2, there is, I, there is a wording that says uh, that basically that staff will endeavor to have agendas available on the Friday before the meeting. I'd like to remove the words endeavor and put at least a, a requirement that the agendas be in the hands of the public and counselors 48 hours before the start of, of a meeting. 18-3 talks about, uh, let me get the piece of paper here. So I'm saying the right.
Point of clarification.
Pardon me?
Sorry to interrupt. I just, I'm curious Counselor Dout, I don't want to destroy your flow here, but I'm wondering if we should deliberate each one as you're going versus quickly going through them all and then have to catch up and try to keep up.
Thank you.
The chair asked for.
Just a minute. I'm the chair. I'll speak for the chair. Um, so what I'm trying to do is get a quick list of what people want to talk about, which Counselor Dout has started to do. And so I'm thinking some of these might overlap and there may be a way to handle more than one at a time. And so once we have the list, we can then go through the list and come up with some motions for what we want adopted. I was hoping that process, process was okay with council and that was what I lined out. So I'm hope, does that answer your question? Thank you. Continue Counselor Dout.
Just trying to be clear and I'm quite happy to negotiate or to debate each one of these as they come up, but I'd really like a chance to do it. Uh, 18-3 uh, says special meetings agenda, agendas will be posted to public notice, posting placed within 24 hours. I think that's, you know, good language, but it doesn't say 24 hours of what. I would like it to say, uh, within 24 hours is the start time of the special meeting. Because if we leave it within 24 hours, it could be 24 hours of July 1st or something, or who knows what. Uh, the other one, 19P, 19P. Yeah, is, uh, we should have some clarification like the old 15-4 about what people can talk about during public input and exactly what it is and what question period is about. Need to be able to distinguish between delegations, public input and questions so that the questions, for example, involve not speeches, but questions involve actual questions of things that are on the agenda for that night. And that public uh, in, public input, be public input that the count, that the public can make, not to ask questions or debate with council, but the public can stand up at the microphone and say, this is what we'd like you to do with this, with this bylaw, this land use bylaw. And they can give us their comments and we can make a decision after that on council. But I think the public input needs some clear definitions of exactly what will be said. And my point of view is that we can make sure that people have the opportunity to talk about things that are on the agenda. But we want to be talking about things that uh, are really business in front of council. The other, the last one is 25C1, I believe. And that is.
A point of information, there's no 25C.
Yeah, you're right. It's 27. I'm working from a couple of different documents. That's one of the things I pointed out earlier. Okay, so 27, 5C, right now, says that when a presiding member is putting the matter to a vote under submissions and A and B, a member must not, one, cross or leave the room. I don't understand what crossing the room is. We're going to forbid people from crossing the room. I don't know what it is. I think we should make the language clear. I see Counselor Alameda waving his finger, but you know, I don't know what crossing the room means. I don't know why we want to prevent it. Uh, but you know, we need, if it's going to be a rule about how we could vote, it should be understandable. So those are my initial list of things that I would like to see changed. And I'm prepared to make motions to amend those, uh, if we get to doing that. But to me, I think it's important that we discuss this procedure bylaw, come to a conclusion about what the rules are going to be. So the public, wherever they're from, can read our rules and understand what they're going to be talking about when they come to us. And we have all the right to do that according to BC's community charter and the trust put in us by the provincial government to create our own rules for our meetings.
Okay, thank you. Um, Counselor Almeida, did you want to, or do you have things you'd like to have on this list of items we want to talk about?
I did not have anything majorly pressing. I was going to uh, go off the um, feedback provided by others and some other ideas. The only one that somewhat stood out to me, and this didn't occur during our initial workshops, but occurred during our um, previous couple of weeks, is, as Counselor Dout said earlier in engagement, we happen to have two council meetings during Prisma. And uh, I just had this feeling that that was the time of the year that it would have been great not to have council meetings. And we currently are penciled in to have two meetings in June. And we've had two meetings in June last year as well. And, and uh, the thought came to me in, at, during Prisma was whether that should, although four months of one-month meetings might be a little too little. Um, but maybe uh, yeah, just a topic for discussion or maybe we do two meetings in a row at the beginning of June and uh, and then enjoy Prisma afterwards. But that was the one thought that came to me during uh, the Prisma Festival.
So that was the um, schedule?
Yeah, technically that'd be I guess 6, 2B, sorry, 2AI, 62AI.
Okay, thank you. Um, Counselor Isaacson, do you have things we should put on the list?
Absolutely. I also have 62AI. 10.1, which is um, conduct at meetings. Um, want to discuss that. Uh, also interested in discussing 16.2. Uh, let's see here, 18. Um, there's some items that I just have some questions on where we have things that are um, clarified how we deal with them at council, but the same language hasn't carried over to um, the committee of the whole section. So for example, we don't address when committee of the wholes are. There's actually no time and date for committee of the wholes currently in this uh, this bylaw. Um, we don't talk about when to submit items for inclusion in the agenda, et cetera. So there's um, just some items in there. I think we need. So there's, um, just some items in there I think we need to replicate. Um, let's see here. Under, uh, I'd like to address, I guess, uh, 19, which is the order of proceedings and business. Again, we don't have a committee of the whole section of this, uh, procedures bylaw that outlines the order of, of proceedings at a committee of the whole. I noticed that, um, uh, announcements and also community engagement reports are not included as they, it currently exists, and so I'm wondering where they would fit, um, and if the intention is to do it as we currently do. Um, see here, so I talked about 19. Uh, also agree with councillor Dowd on item 21. Uh, see. Uh, I'd like to talk about 28, which is delegations. And then there's some items that I just think are like clerical cleanups that I don't, I personally don't feel need debate. So for example, um, uh, 16.3 references how, how a chair has decided if the acting mayor isn't present, and we've already outlined what that procedure is, so I think we could, you know, strike 16.3, for example. So I, I just have some administrivia ones as well, and, uh, so maybe I just have an administrivia section. Topic.
Um, if, if, um, things are minor edits and don't require really debate of council time, I'm wondering from staff if we could just submit edits that we think make sense and not have to vote on them, is that okay? Like not substantive changes, but we're talking about, you know, things we see as being wording edits.
Sheriff, they, I'm hesitant to say yes specifically. Something minor to, one might not be to the other. Things like commas and, um, some formatting pieces, certainly I, I wouldn't think that that would be, um, very contentious. But, uh, I mean, certainly submit them if you like, and maybe we could note that, um, in a future version if it's actually changing content. Um, yeah, it, it might be case by case, I don't know if you have any other.
Okay. So I, I would propose if you think they're fairly minor edits that do not require things, that we could just submit them if they don't make it to the draft that makes it into the next version, we could bring them up at that time if that helps expedite this process.
That sounds good. It's a lot of like just math questions and like meetings spelled incorrectly and those sorts of things, so happy to, to do that.
Thank you. Anything else?
That's it for me.
Thank you. Um, councillor Silcock.
Sure. So I also think most of the questions that I have are actually, um, small structural and copy editing type questions. Uh, and I'm glad to go over all of them, but, um.
If you think they're going to change the intent of the wording and you, and they require council deliberation, then you should bring them forward. If you think they're mainly edits that do not require council debate, then perhaps just submit them directly and see if they make it into the next draft.
So my, um, in answer to that, um, my intention, I found syntax problems and, um, structural problems that make the meaning of what is expressed in more than one, uh, item unclear to me. But reading it a number of times, reading more than one, a number of times, I came up with slight structural changes, removal, maybe inclusion of a couple of words, so I think.
How many is it?
Let me, let's see. About a half a dozen, but I think I would like to submit them to staff and see what staff speaks before we, I just don't want to delay this.
Yeah, I hear you. Um, there's two ways to delay.
I think that I'm, I'm wanting to, I, I, I'm not wanting to change meaning.
Yes, I understand that. So there's two threats to delay. One is that we don't talk about something we should have talked about, and then we end up delaying further down the road. Um, the other way to delay is that we have so many things to talk about that we don't get to them today. And so we're trying to balance that. Um, if you think you can submit and they don't change the meaning, then go right ahead. If you think there's any that you actually have to talk about, then bring them forward.
Okay, I'll mention one. 30-11B, I believe needs reconstruction. And 37-5A, removal of the word if at the end of the first line.
What was that one councillor?
37, 37-5A, removal of the word if at the end of the first line. 39.6, uh, I would insert the word which between OCP bylaw and may.
39, 39.6A, did you say?
Hmm? 39.6.
Good. Uh, Mayor Wosnow, do you have things we need on the list?
Thank you. I'm actually going to back up. I believe that if you're in a hurry, take the long route. And, uh, I think, uh, well, I know I don't agree with the position put forward by councillor Dowd in his assessment of the opportunities for the public to learn about the process we've gone through. And, uh, I believe, uh, Sherri Burton's letter to, uh, council and the CAO succinctly points out that in fact, from the public's perception, there has been very little opportunity to learn about the changes proposed and the rationale for them. So, put it in a perspective, what, what is a long time? So the city had a report about four years ago on how to utilize city-owned land. And we're sitting here and nothing has been done other than agreeing that there would be more studies. So I think when you're dealing with something as important, especially in a divisive community, which all of council has frequently used that term, that we should take a step back. We should prepare a good opportunity for the public to come out. We should post the existing bylaw and all of the proposed changes and the rationale for those changes. And at the end of the process, we'll be in a much better position rather than cherry picking, um, words and commas and that, to actually have a document that is going to make our community feel that they've been listened to and that they are now quite pleased that council has taken the time to allow them to have appropriate input into something as important as protocols. Thank you.
So that's about process, not points for edit within the document?
Exactly. I think that the, the next process should be a timeout and an engagement with the public at where we are now.
Okay. Um, I'm going to just put that at the end, we'll deal with that after we're done with Did you have any points of edit you wish to have on the list?
Uh, just in terms of, uh, understanding the reference to his, her being changed to their, the, and, uh, all of the subjects around the delegation and consideration of the legal impact.
Delegations, okay. That's on the list a few times. Um, councillor Palm, do you have things that you wish to have edits on the list or?
Yeah, first, first of all, through the chair, I, I want to, uh, echo the mayor's comments just now. I have the same, uh, reservations of where we are in the process and I.
Point of privilege, I can't hear you councillor Palm, can you please speak into your microphone?
Sorry. It keeps getting away from me, sorry councillor Oxerson. So what I was saying is I echoed the mayor's sentiments on where we are in the process. I think we need some time to sort this out, uh, largely to a greater extent and have public input. When councillor Dowd says that the public's been informed for some time, uh, it was pointed out by a public member to me that, uh, our first meeting in this regard was talking about amendments to the existing procedure bylaw, but this is far greater than an amendment. This is a new document and I think we need the time to study it so that we can get it right for the public because we all campaigned on open and honest government and, uh, there are some limitations in this present version. So I'm going to go through a few of the things that jump off the page to me when I reviewed the document. I don't want to belabor the point because I'll talk to these down the road, but I'll refer to the sections that I'm concerned about. So first of all, we seem to be having a number of special meetings these days and, um, the public being notified for 24 hours doesn't really give them a lot of time to, uh, do their homework and know what's coming. So I would propose that instead of the 24 hour notice, we change that to 48 to start with. That's on section eight. Number five, double the time for notice. Yeah, so just move, oh, sorry, next page, it's on the back here. When it refers to six members of council at one time may participate in a hybrid council meeting, I don't agree with that statement at all. We're all duly elected. And from my perspective, we should all be in this gallery unless there's extenuating circumstances. That's what you signed up for. So having six members online, unless it's a power outage or something going on in the, uh, with the climate, I don't, I don't see why people can't make meetings. Um, also, um, the same, let's see, what number was this to start with? Number nine, and that was number three. Number four, it allows for electronic meetings for any particular councillor, up to eight consecutive. To me, that doesn't make any sense either. Why do they have to be online for that like the time? They should be here. Part three, conflict of interest. We received an email from one of our citizens outlining that there's far more extensive conflict of interest wording in procedure bylaws elsewhere in various communities. I think instead of this simple reference to the community charter that we should expand because of the, I'm going to just say contentious state of conflict of interest in Powell River at the present time. Uh, no, no, do, do, sign. Next up, we have the agenda to be published Friday afternoon. I know presently where our staff is working overtime, trying to get these out at the end of the day on a Friday, but it makes more sense to me, as we've done in the past, that these were always published on a Thursday afternoon so that council and the public had a chance to review it on, on Friday, have a good read over the weekend, ask some questions Friday or Monday prior to meetings Tuesday or Thursday. I just, uh, don't understand why we're waiting till the last minute to get this out the door on a Friday. Then we move to number 19, where we are limiting, um, the items on an agenda that council can ask questions of to items J, L, or M. Me, it's always been an open session at meetings where anything on the agenda was fair game for the public to ask clarifying questions. I don't think there should be limits on the public in order to ask questions at any particular meeting. So I would like to see that changed.
Sorry, well, that was that 19 what? Or where are we?
We, we limit, uh, public, uh, questioning to items for order of proceeding business J, L, and M. That's all they're allowed to ask questions of in this document. Whereas previously, they were allowed to ask questions on the entire agenda. If something was there, and whether it was a delegation or some other item, they were always able to ask questions. I think communication is key and there needs to be a lot more communication in this community right now.
I'm trying to find the section of the document you're referring to councillor Palm, could you please?
Well, okay.
You said 19, 19's the agenda, but it's 21 and 22 that are the included clarifications.
21? Okay, thank you.
Yeah, 21. Somewhere it makes reference to those three items from number 19, J, L, and M.
21-1.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, also, where we are, um.
Point of clarification on councillor Palm's last comment.
Yep.
Yeah, go right ahead.
So just for clarity, the public input period is actually at the beginning of the meeting before the topic. So there is still a question period at the end of the meeting that would cover, that has no limitations. It's just the J, L, and M were designed to focus on topics that were coming up on the agenda that if an input, let's say a topic of maybe a bylaw change or a zoning thing or, or whatever it might be, it was a opportunity to get feedback in advance, which we have not actually previously done. So there's still a question period at the end of the meeting, which is the clarification part.
Okay.
And there's no limitations on that.
I guess my, my, my major concern is that you're not allowed to ask any questions in terms of delegation presentations. That's always been the case.
Right, because it's an additional section that is to solicit public input on the actual decisions being made before council that day. It's not the intention to replace it with the question period, it's a completely different section.
Yeah. So I, I'm just going to keep moving along because.
Okay, carry on.
We'll talk about it at great length later on. I have concerns about item 21, public input period, where the wording in red is, uh, very limiting to the public. Um, and it's a discretionary call by who is ever in that chair, putting them in the hot seat. And we can all agree that if there's foul language being used and everything, we need to quell that, but this goes far broader than, um, anything we've had previously or we've never had anything in that regard. And then I'm just going to, I'm not going to go and belabor all the items I have because I can deal with that later. But the, the item that was also pointed out today in the presentation, so I've dealt with, uh, section 21 on delegations, we should not be limiting at all. I think, um, we, we should increase the number of delegations from the present two that's in this document to at least three from the public and one from organizations, limited at four per meeting, so that everybody gets a fair shot to have their voice heard. Why we're limiting it to two and only at council meetings and not committee of the whole, is that my understanding? It's not on committee of the whole any longer? And if that's the case, I'm totally against that. And then we get to item 28, which was pointed out earlier today in terms of legality, limitations, and charter of rights. We need to review that. And my last question to staff is, there was a request for legal opinion on the contents of this revisions. Have we received a legal comment on, on this at this point?
Through the chair, it was requested to have by today, but we still haven't received it.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Chair.
And I think the intention is once we land on a draft, to also get a legal review of the entire draft.
Yeah, once we get the concrete in front of us, we can talk to it.
Okay, so, um, we have some repetitions, um, and quite a long list here. So, um, I think we will start with section 16 and it's repeated by a couple of folks with a couple of different points. We will open the floor with councillor Dowd to speak to 16 and his. We will open the floor with Counselor Douth to speak to 16 and his point, and then we will follow up with Counselor Isaacson, and then we will have discussion on what we want to move on that one.
Point of privilege, I can't hear Counselor Douth. I think what you're asking us to do now is to go through the list of suggestions that everybody's made and debate them one at a time, and there's quite a long list there. I would prefer to sort out what council wants to do generally. I've said that I would like to make a motion to refer what we come, the draft with whatever amendments we come to today, to a first reading at a future time, be that August or September. The mayor has said that he would like to put it off until sometime in the distant future, not distant, sometime in the future when we've all had more time to talk about it. Those are two very different ideas. I think if we're going to spend all the time it'll take to debate each and every one of these changes, we should have an idea of what we're trying to achieve at the end because we could be here until midnight tonight determining that we're not going to adopt any of those things. We're going to have another discussion. So I would like to make a motion, okay, that we refer this draft procedure by law to a future council meeting as amended by today's meeting. If there's a second here, I'll talk about it some more.
Seconded by Counselor Isaacson.
That's what I'd like to do. I'd like to get the concept there that we're going to amend this tonight or however long it takes us to do the amendments, and that's going to go to a future council meeting for discussion. The public will have all kinds of opportunities to be involved, and we can do that. If you don't want to do that, if you want to postpone it till a future time, then defeat this motion and go with one that does that, and we can dispense with our work this evening.
Just, I'm going to ask of staff, it was my intention to entertain motions about the draft once we had decided what we wanted to change about it. Does making changes to it after this motion problematic in a process way? Would it not make more sense to know what draft changes we want prior to making the So are we in order?
Chair, I don't think it's hugely going to matter if this, if this motion is passed first, then any changes that are made will go with the motion. If you, I think it's six and one half dozen in the other.
Okay, so we've had a motion from Counselor Douth. Do we want to debate them? We can debate the motion if you like. Who has comments on the motion? Counselor Almeida.
I think I'm understanding Counselor Douth's motion is, obviously, we haven't made any amendments yet, but we're going to vote that the plan would be that after we make all these amendments, we're proving basically in advance that these amended draft will show up as a reading one option in a future council meeting. Is that correct?
As we've done before with things like our financial plan and our budget.
I'm in favor of that.
Okay. Counselor Palm.
A point of clarification through the chair. Is Counselor Douth suggesting that we go through each of these items and debate each ones and clarify how this document should come forward tonight?
So...
Be here till midnight tonight?
So that is not this... So I'm, just a minute. So at the moment, the motion on the table is, once we are finished deciding what amendments to make, that that document be forwarded to, I don't know if it was the next council meeting or a future council meeting, I think is the, is the thing, as for first reading of a bylaw, at which time kicks off our public consultation through the agenda package and making that available. The motion doesn't address whether we're going to debate each and every one of these things individually or not. It's just about what we do with it once we're finished with our draft tonight.
I'm just trying to clarify it for our process here.
Yes, that's what I was trying to do, too.
This motion passes, are we going through each section tonight?
So the intention is to make amendments to the draft tonight, yes.
Well, I would much prefer the mayor's suggestion of doing this in a reasonable time when we're fresh and we've got our thinking caps on so that we can have healthy discussion and the public's able to know what is happening at that point in time. So I won't be voting for this motion on the floor.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else have any comments on the motion? I'll call the question. All in favor of the motion? Any opposed? Motion carries five to two. Counselor Douth.
I'd like to make a motion. Just make sure I have the right page in front of me so I don't make a mistake.
Are you addressing Section 16?
It's going to be to change Article 16. 16-2, to change Article 16-2. So it says, immediately after calling the meeting to order, the mayor or the presiding member shall begin each meeting with a territorial acknowledgement in the same language, the rest of the language in two would remain the same.
Seconded by Counselor Southcott.
Reason for doing that is because I don't particularly like the language that's proposed in there. I think people can do better on their own. It's traditional. In every political forum that I've been to in British Columbia in the last six years of a territorial acknowledgement before the beginning of a meeting, I think we should do it, but I think we should leave ourselves the freedom to determine exactly what the presiding member will say.
So for clarity, you want the Section 16-2 to strike out the actual wording of the acknowledgement and just indicate that we're to say one?
If we need that. I'm suggesting that we strike out, "We acknowledge and respect the traditional territory and the treaty lands of the Kalaman Nation where we live, work, and play," and replace those words with territorial acknowledgement.
Okay, thank you. Comments? Counselor Almeida.
I think for clarity, Counselor Douth, you want to also strike out the following statement and then be with a territorial acknowledgement.
That sounds good.
Yeah.
Okay. So we're agreed that the emotion is to strike out with the following statement, "We acknowledge and respect the traditional territory and treaty lands of the Kalaman Nation where we live, work, and play," and replace it with territorial acknowledgement. That is the motion on the floor. Counselor Isaacson.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I support the motion. I think that we are able to be meaningful in our approaches to this. I think this language here gives a great example, and perhaps it's what the nation has shared with other community groups who are interested in making territorial acknowledgements. But I do appreciate the ability to have some flexibility to do land acknowledgements given whatever the current context is. I personally feel like there's two ways to do it. One is to leave this clause here, and whether is another in some communities, for example, territorial acknowledgement is listed as item two in the agenda right after opening. But I feel like this motion achieves the same thing, and so I'll support it.
All in favor? Any opposed? None opposed, motion carries. Go ahead.
Okay, so moving right along. I'm going to make a motion under 18-2. 18-2. And we'll go where it says halfway through. It says, "The corporate officer will endeavor to make the agenda available to members of the council." I move the amendment to remove the word endeavor to make it certain that those agendas will be available no later than Friday afternoon prior to the meeting. And that is, actually covers what Counselor Palm was suggesting. The agendas could be available earlier, but Friday afternoon allows council to, council and the public, because the public are quite interested in our agendas, to go through the agendas, read through them, ask any questions, and be prepared for debate on the Tuesday or the Thursday. Having an agenda that just shows up on the day or the day before a meeting, it's quite a load on everybody. Understand and read through the documents. If anybody's looked at our agenda packages, sometimes they run to 300 or 400 pages, so it's not a simple operation to go through that in an hour. Read it all and prepare for the debate that you're coming to. So this would remove the word endeavor in 18-2A and make it more certain that the agendas would be available on the Friday afternoon or earlier.
Is there a second here? Counselor Almeida seconds. Counselor Isaacson, go ahead, Counselor Isaacson.
Yeah, just a point of clarity. I think this actual words being stricken are endeavor to, just so that it makes grammatical sense. Will, so it will then reads, "The corporate officer will make," endeavor to.
Yeah, got it. So the motion is to strike out the words endeavor to in Sections 18.2. Any comments on that motion? Call the question. All in favor? Any opposed? None opposed, motion carries. Go ahead.
Talk about 18-3. And 18-3 currently says, "Special meeting's agenda, special meeting agendas will be posted to public notice posting place within 24 hours." And I would add of the meeting's start time.
Is there a second here? Seconded by Counselor Isaacson. I think it's self-explanatory. Do we have any comments on the motion?
Is this the number, sorry?
24 hours of the meeting start date, 18.2 or 18.3, I think it was. So the motion wants to add words within 24 hours of the meeting time to the, and go ahead, Counselor Almeida.
My concern with this is that there are times that we've had special meetings called within a 24, 30-hour period specifically to go into a closed meeting for a certain topic. And I think there's, it doesn't happen often, and I prefer if it didn't happen at all, but it does happen when certain topics or items come up that require us to be in a closed meeting. So I think this handcuffs us and handcuffs staff a little bit when that's the case.
Just a minute. So I have a question of staff with regard to Counselor Almeida's ask. We have charter provisions that require the minimum of 24 hours, and that would be 24 hours from the meeting. This is consistent with that, is that not correct? Okay. So by adding 24 hours within the meeting, does that change the intent at all?
Through the chair, I don't believe so. I think that the legislation says we have to have the agenda posted within 24 hours of the meeting start so we can add that.
Motion to change it to 48.
Nope, 24. We didn't have a motion for 48 on this motion.
Confused because it says 24 in the current...
So he wants to add the words after 24, within the 24 hours of the meeting instead of...
Oh.
So, perfect, thanks.
Just explain the logic of why I would add those words.
Sure.
The logic of why I want to add those words is having a sentence that says, "Special meetings agenda, special meeting agendas will be posted to the public posting place within 24 hours." It doesn't say 24 hours of what? Could be within 24 hours of July 1st, or it could be 24 hours of the meeting. I'm just suggesting we add those two words in there so it's more clear what it means.
My brain wasn't listening properly.
It's okay. It's a long day for all of us.
So any comments on the meeting, on the motion before us? All in favor of the motion? Any opposed? None opposed, motion carries. Go ahead.
Okay, I'm kind of sucking all the air out of the room here with my...
Go faster than.
I'm going to skip one, and I'm going to go to 27-5-C-1, where it basically says that when a vote is being taken, a counselor will not cross the room or leave the room. And I don't understand what cross the room, what the prohibition of crossing a room means, and I would simply make a modification to remove 27-5-C-1 from the list. I don't think it contributes anything that we don't have. We already have a community charter that says if there's a vote, everybody in the room has to vote, but I don't think we need to prohibit people from leaving the room or getting up to walk to the other side, as I unfortunately did earlier. I was down there getting my notes from my dear wife, and I voted on my way back to the chair, and under these new rules, that would have been illegal.
So do we have a second here for the motion? Seconded by Counselor Southcott. Anybody have any comments? All in favor? Any opposed? None opposed, motion carries. We're striking that out. So you skipped nine, sorry, one of them. Did you want to go back to it?
No, but I would, you know, if you give me the opportunity, I would make a comment. And, you know, it's really, the one that I didn't talk about was 19P, and I think, as other counselors have said, we need to get clear and concise wording about what the public input period is for, what delegations are for, and what limitations there might be to delegations, and question period, and exactly what it is for, so that if we have all those written out in clear descriptions, that whoever is the chair of the meeting will be able to control the meeting and make sure that when people are given the opportunity to give public input or to ask a question or to give a delegation, they know what they're doing and what the rules are. For example, delegations are not designed, I don't think, to ask questions of council or to debate with council members. Public input is not an opportunity for debate. It's an opportunity for the public to say, "This is what we would like you to do with this budget bylaw or with this financial plan or with this land use decision." They have an opportunity to come to the microphone and say what they think. Or, for example, a procedure bylaw, say, "Here's what we would like it to say." And I think we need to clarify those definitions. So thanks for the latitude. I'm not making a motion. I want to hear what other people have to say about the best way to clarify that.
So can I move to Trina's list, or sorry, Counselor Isaacson's list? Oh. Oh, there was no motion, so I didn't think we were doing anything.
And I don't know if there is a need for one. So I'm wondering, and this might also relate to one of Counselor Palm's suggestions, is Section 21 and Section 22 seek to describe the public input period and the public clarification period. So I'm open to updates and edits to those. I did have a similar feeling when I first read the agenda and was trying to understand J, L, and M. JL and M. So, but, you know, that part aside, I'm wondering, and maybe staff can clarify, if it makes a difference if section 19 is placed after what's now section 22. So we actually describe public input, we describe public clarification, and then we actually list a proposed agenda. So that eliminates people reading a agenda template and wondering what the difference is between input and clarification and not reading any further. Now they've read all the way through, then they have the agenda template at the end. I wonder if that.
So you're proposing that we just move section 19 to after the explanation of each section?
At least after 22, yeah.
Does anybody else like that? I mean, yeah, okay. We got a second for that motion, so we can comment on the motion now. Counselor Isaacson.
I, I would specifically like to move that section 19 gets moved to act after section 26, because those are all the items that cover what happens in meetings.
Okay. So we could call that a friendly amendment if you're all okay with that.
Second the friendly or the removal, or it needs to be seconded?
So the friendly amendment is that section 19 goes after section 26. All in favor of the amendment? Any opposed? Non-opposed, amendment carries. We're back to the main motion as amended. Any comments on the main motion as amended? So the public clarifications is, this is a question from me, is what used to be our question period, right? Yes. Okay, thank you. Yeah, go ahead, sorry. I was kind of caught up.
I think we, in the, in the draft, we've got three headings. We've got public input period, which is one thing, where members of the public may make oral comment only regarding, regarding items listed under JL and M on the council agenda for that meeting, and must first state their name and address, et cetera. Okay? So that says, that's the public input period, and then there's some details on. There's a public clarification, which is 22.
I'm wondering, I, I don't disagree with your conversation, but I'm wondering if it's related to the motion on the table, or that's a secondary conversation after we're done? Because the motion right now is just to move section 19, has nothing to do with the actual section 21 and 22.
I just heard a question from the chair that was using another set of language, because we've got public input, public clarification, and delegations.
And public clarification, yeah.
The language is important because what we're talking about right now.
I'm happy to discuss it and just.
Yep.
Back to the motion. We can call the question and have a discussion on a different item after that, that would be great. The, all in favor of moving section 19 to after section 26? Any opposed? I'm not opposed, sorry. I'm getting tired already, it's too hot. Motion carries. Next, Counselor Isaacson, please.
It's actually kind of a related one. Delegations number 28 is currently listed out of, kind of out of order. And so I move that section 28 delegation be moved to, after the public input period, so after 21. Well, and actually, now that I think about it, there's a whole bunch of, like, notice of motion is kind of out of order with public, like, it's put up after public clarification. I guess my, sorry, let me restart. I move that the sections that describe items, sections of the agenda, be put in order that they appear.
In section 19.
In section 19. Because there's a couple items that are out of order there.
So the, so the motion on the floor is to reorder the agenda topics that appear in the agenda order, in order on, okay, is that clear, staff? Yeah, okay. Seconded by Counselor Almeida. Any comments on the motion? All in favor? Any opposed? Non-opposed, motion carries. At any point, if the motion isn't clear to you, could you just let me know? Thanks. Counselor Isaacson.
Thank you. Okay, I'll go back to 62A1. I'll give everybody a moment. This is time and location of meetings, 62A1. It currently reads in, like, a regular council meeting be held on two Thursdays except, of each month, except July, August, September, and December. My motion is to strike September and December and insert an and between July and August. And if there's a secondary, I can speak to why.
Do we have a secondary for that motion? Counselor South Scott, seconds? Go ahead, speak.
Thank you. I think the main thing is, I want to do everything I, we can to avoid having to add special meetings. I would rather us cancel a meeting that doesn't have any agenda items ready for it than adding special meetings. And so while the current, the current language, when staff are preparing the meeting schedule for the year, gives them a little bit of leeway to shift within the month, given where UBCM is or when holidays start. And so I would prefer to include two meetings in September and December, knowing that we can cancel them if we need to. But it perhaps might help us avoid adding special meetings like we've done quite a bit in the past year. Thank you.
Counselor Palm?
Yes, I agree with, through the chair, I agree with Counselor Isaacson's suggestion that we, in my time here, we've always had two meetings in September to start the fall sessions. Always had two meetings in December where we wish everybody a Merry Christmas, close to December 20th. And I would like to add that we only have one meeting in January, because the past practice has been that staff coming up off holidays in December needs to get their ducks in order, in order to have one meeting in January. And that's always been the case previously that I can remember.
I'll second Counselor Palm's amendment to the motion.
Okay, so the amendment has been seconded. Counselor Almeida?
I have to provide some contrary opinions. I'm not opposed to the two meetings in December. I think we've done that, and for various reasons, as Counselor Palm just mentioned, it can be valuable. I think in September, at least the three years I've been involved, or been paying attention, UBCM comes right in that middle along with Labor Day, and now Truth and Reconciliation Day. It just becomes a, quickly a busier month than, than we like. So I feel keeping September in there as a, a one. But January, in the past, we've had Finance Committee, and this year we pre-scheduled a special council meeting in January. So we still had two meetings, but we had them back-to-back in January instead of spaced out by two weeks. So we still accommodated for staff time and coming, coming back after the holidays, but scheduled it for a back-to-back meetings as we were getting into budget mode at that point as well. So I like looking at the schedule that's here on our desk. I, I think January and December are better with two, but keep September at one would be my feedback. So I wouldn't be in favor of the current motion at the table.
So we're speaking to the amendment right now, which is to add January as a month of one meeting. And the other points you raised had to do with the main motion once amended, so we'll just deal with the January issue under the amendment. Mayor Waznow?
Support the January addition.
Okay. Anybody else? Counselor Isaacson?
Thank you, Chair. I would prefer to leave January in there, or sorry, not include January in the months that include one meeting for the reasons that I made this original motion. There is leeway for staff to move, to pick the two Thursdays later in the month, or you schedule them in a way that works, for example, with the budget process. And we can always counsel, cancel one if necessary, but adding ones, which we likely will have to do in the budget process, is just, it's hard to schedule around. So I would prefer to not pass this amendment.
So I'm just going to speak to the amendment myself. I am in favor of having more meetings in the schedule than less. I'd rather cancel meetings than have to put extra meetings in. I find it extremely difficult to keep flexing my schedule around with, with adding meetings in, and I find it much easier to put things in my schedule well in advance and plan around them. And if I get a bonus and something gets canceled, that is definitely easier to manage affairs around. I don't know how everybody else is, but if you've got jobs and all kinds of things, last-minute meetings are tricky, ones that are in the schedule and part of your agenda are easier to accommodate. So I'm not in favor of the amendment. Counselor Palm?
Yeah, we seem to be all over the map through the chair on this one. So we have a motion on the floor, I believe.
So the motion, if you want to know, is to amend the current, the main motion to add January as a one-meeting month.
Yeah, so I would, I just look at the schedule here for September, and AVICC, I forgot about that, comes up third week. So right now, we have only had two meetings scheduled in September, the 10th and the 12th, before we are off to UBCM. So I kind of like to keep September as one, add the January as one, and December for two. That's the way I see it.
Okay, well, we'll deal with September under the main motion right now. We were just dealing with the January addition to the main motion. I'll call the question on the amendment. So at January as a one-meeting month, because currently it's in the draft as a two-meeting All in favor of the amendment? Any opposed? So that is, two opposed, five? Oh, three, yeah, three opposed, four in favor, motion carries. So we're back to the main motion, and the main motion, as stated, was to have September be a two-meeting month, December be a two-meeting month, and now January to be a one-meeting month. That is the main motion. Counselor Dout?
We already dealt with January, and generally, I prefer to know when the meetings are going to happen. And recent experience, I think we had, was it either four or five meetings in June? It looks like we're going to have, and these are council meetings, they're not, it's not council, council and committee of the whole. So we had, I think, three council meetings in June. I think we're currently on course to having two in July. We've got one scheduled in August, who knows what will happen to that? September, we've got budget preparation is coming up, we've got all kinds of things. Maybe we're talking about the procedure bylaw again, maybe we're talking about the other things. But I just soon have dates scheduled in our, in our calendar for those meetings. And if we can cancel them, that's fine. But if there's going to go ahead, at least we know ahead of time, we're going to try to plan our lives and plan the work that we're doing. We know when a meeting is planned to be, except, you know, as, as opposed to the number of special meetings we're seeing regularly. So I'm in favor of this motion.
Thank you. Anybody else have comments on the motion? So the motion, as it stands now, is proposing September be a two-meeting month, December be a two-meeting month, and January be a one-meeting month. All in favor of the motion? Any opposed? One opposed, motion carries. So Counselor Isaacson, what was next on your list?
You're on mute.
10.1.
Sorry, yes, sorry, I was not, I didn't turn my microphone on. I actually want to tackle the item that Counselor Dout brought up. And I'm forgetting actually what it was right now.
You had committee of the whole in general is just kind of missing times and repetition of sections that should apply to committee of the whole. And did you want to address that as well? I have it in, in the list.
Sir, yeah, and I, I don't, I don't know if this, this motion is specific enough to give staff direction. So I want to read the motion, but before it gets seconded, I do want to check in with staff. So the motion would be something like to add sections related to committee of the whole that are covered in council but not yet covered in the committee of the whole sections. So again, for example, we don't have meeting times in that section, or in, in the committee of the whole section, we don't have items related to when materials need to be submitted. And so just comparing the two and seeing like, is there anything missing from the committee of the whole section that is, is specific, for example, with respect to date or order of agenda, that needs to be replicated in the committee of the whole section? So I, I don't want to go through each one, I just want to make sure that, that the committee of the whole section is covered sufficiently enough. And so my motion would be, so, so if I make the motion, as I kind of described it, I'm wondering if staff, if that's enough information for staff to, to work on.
So may I suggest that maybe staff propose a motion to help us get to the correct motion?
Sure.
Through the chair, and just looking, so I think the only thing that I can see that's missing specifically about committee of the whole is when they occur. Near the top, near the beginning of the bylaw, it says that all of the procedures below apply to council and committee meetings. So the, the submission date would be the same, that was done intentionally so that we don't have four different dates to think about. So, because all the agendas are getting published on the same day anyway. So, but I do think that the date of the meetings is missing, or like the timing.
So how about, like, the order of proceedings, where we currently have some differences in committee whole, like council reports and so, council report outs and things like that? Is that there somewhere else?
It's not as far as I know. No, not that I see, so.
So maybe a single section on committee of the whole that outlines anything that might be different or missing?
I have a suggestion, the language that might help.
Yeah.
If you don't mind.
Go ahead.
Perhaps a motion that staff be requested to make the committee of the whole provisions in the procedure bylaw consistent with the council provisions. Now, and I think what Counselor Isaacson had said is there are differences, there are things that are not laid out for committee of the whole that are laid out for council. Rather than going through all of those, I'm suggesting if we're going to ask staff to rewrite something, that we simply ask them to rewrite the things that are inconsistent to make them consistent between council and committee of the whole. That might not work. We might need to do something else.
I don't think that really gets to where we need to be. Go ahead, Counselor Isaacson.
Yeah, so I think the intention is not that they're inconsistent, but there are just some things that are missing. And I know that, that, you know, arts 3.1 talks about this bylaw governs the proceedings of all. But for example, in section 19, order of proceedings and business, it says the usual order of business at a regular council meeting. So that's, to me, that means that that is the agenda at a regular council meeting. And so if committee of the whole is different, for example, if there's community engagement reports, then that reports, then that needs to be referenced somewhere. Um, and we don't have, yeah, time and place, um, provisions for Committee of the Whole. So it's not so much about the, making them consistent, it's, um, it's about specifying the times where Committee of the Whole is, is different than, than the council ones.
Yes, Mayor, please.
Just gonna support Counselor Dought's words to provide direction to staff.
Yeah, we're just trying to make sure we get the right direction. Go ahead, um, please help us just.
Um, so through the chair, um, um, potential motion could be that staff be directed to, um, add further provisions to the bylaw, uh, to reflect timing and, um, agenda variations for Committee of the Whole specifically?
Do we like that, Counselor Isaacson?
I think so, but off the top of my head, there might be other items than those two, but those are the ones that, uh, are immediately in my mind.
Okay, so I think we, we like it. If we can get a second for that motion, which we will call Counselor Isaacson's motion, uh, seconded by Counselor Almeda, and, um, should things be missing when we see the draft again, we can further refine that, and we won't do that today. Okay. Um, any comments on the motion on the floor? Is everybody clear on the motion on the floor that Ms. LaForte read to us? Ms. LaForte? Okay. Um, no comments? All in favor? Any opposed? None opposed, motion carries. Okay, back to you, Counselor Isaacson, next on your list.
One question before we move forward?
Yes.
Um, as we were looking at that, I caught a small typo that I don't believe requires a motion. Um, section 43, number one, which was talking about going to Committee of the Whole, I believe is supposed to say by resolution, not be resolution.
Yes, so in general, as we catch these, we were gonna just submit them to staff at any time. They don't require council debate.
That was my submission.
Counselor Isaacson? We are past the Committee of the Whole on your list, and, um, were you gonna speak to order of proceedings, or we're done with that as well?
Um, let's see, here, 19, order of proceedings. Okay, this is, this is gonna require more of a conversation. Um, so, I think, you know, one of the difficulties that I have always found, um, in hearing public input is, I prefer to hear public input before we, um, before I come to, for example, Committee of the Whole, so that when I am making a motion or voting on a motion to refer someone to staff, that any amendments that I might wanna consider, I've had the opportunity to hear from. Um, and so, I'm hesitant to make a motion, I'm curious to hear the appetite of, of the rest of council for this. And, and that is, um, that we put the public input period in particular, or public input period and delegations specifically on the Committee of the Whole agenda, um, because that's where that information is often most useful in us to explore the issue and get to a recommendation to send to council. So, um, or, like, and/or, I know we've... Yeah, I'm, I'm going all over on the, place on this, but I guess one thing that I want to remind council is, is, you know, these are, our council meetings are meant for us to decide on council business, given public input. Um, but they them, in themselves, are not public forums. Um, these are council business meetings. And I think, um, while, like, I think there are better venues for broader public input, for example, having a quarterly public forum or open house of some kind. And so I'm just, I would like to focus the public input and delegations where they're most useful to us, and I feel like in the order of things, they are most useful to us, uh, at the Committee of the Whole stage. And so I'm, I, I, anyways, I'm, I'm curious to hear what other council members think, cause I don't necessarily have a s- specific resolution beyond some of the items that I've just shared.
Of Counselor Dought and then Counselor Palm?
Oh, okay. And, no, I don't, don't have a problem with deli, with the public input period and the delegations being on both agendas. But I think they need to be on both agendas, because we have had a lot of discussions at council about trying to eliminate Committee of the Whole meetings and bring some business directly to council. And if we were to do that, have business come directly to council, but not have public input at council meetings, then we would be going in a backwards direction. Well, I think, you know, it's important to me that the public be able to have input, and the public be able to seek clarification, and do all those things at council meetings. If we wanna do it at the Committee of the Whole as well, I think we've actually done everything we need to do to get staff to add that to the agenda right now. But I would, I would not be in favor of eliminating those from the council meetings.
Counselor Palm?
Yeah, so I agree with, uh, Counselor Dought, it's important to have...
Counselor Palm, can you speak into your microphone?
Sorry. I, I agree, um, with Counselor Dought, Counselor Isaacson, that we need delegations on both agendas, because the way we're operating now, new items come up on each agenda without any previous conversation. So, it's important that the public, once they see the agenda, has a chance to put their questions or comments forward. Um, so the number is a concern to me in terms of limiting, and I guess, not, I'm not gonna speak to that at this mo- moment, but...
You can speak.
I would encourage that we have them on both. That way you can limit the number to, say, two from the public, one from, uh, uh, organization, so that you've got three delegations, if, if necessary, on both. They may not be utilized, and if the organization was not utilized, maybe there's room for another public comment. I, I just see that beneficial for open dialogue.
Ms. LaForte?
Uh, through the chair, thank you. Um, just, uh, some notes for council's reference. Um, the, uh, the, generally, the practice for staff is to put delegations on Committee of the Whole. Um, we, I think the public do find it flexible sometimes, if they can't make that time to have the option, uh, to go to council instead. Um, so, staff generally intend to, or make an effort to put delegations to Committee of the Whole specifically, um, if that helps. And then, um, just for, for clarity for council, uh, cause the wording's there, but there's a lot of words. So the public input period is comment, and the public clarification is for questions. So, um, the public input can, or the, sorry, the public clarification can be, a question can be asked on any agenda item. So that is still there.
Thank you. Um, Counselor Southcott?
Yeah, thanks. Just a quick question. Isn't this the same as what we have done for a long time? Um, but it's just included, it, heretofore has just been included in our agendas where, where there'll be a note before, like, a bylaw, um, ask if there's, to the chair, ask if there's any public comments. It, I didn't take this public input period to be a whole new concept, but basically just the language defining what we've already been doing.
Through the chair, yes, that, um, was under specific things, like, um, like development variance permits. Um, this gives it a little more, uh, it opens it up a little more to be about kind of any decision you're making.
Same thing, basically, right?
And, and then all put into one section, so it's not sporadic throughout the meeting.
Yes, Counselor?
Just one clarifying question on that. So in terms of what we have presently, if we're discussing an item, and there's a business owner in the gallery that is involved, and he puts his hand up in the gallery, does the still, chair still have the opportunity to al- allow that individual to speak, according to what we have here?
Uh, through the chair, it's not, that procedure isn't specified, it's ultimately up to the chair. As, as you've done in the past, the chair will ask for consent from council if they're willing to entertain. Um, again, they're still your meetings, so you run them.
That's right, not stifling anyone. Thank you.
Counselor Dought?
Now, I'm more confused than I was before, because when I look at 19, the Order of Proceedings in Business, it has a particular place on the agenda, F, for public input period. It, it shows it happening after public statutory hearings and before general matters, delegations, et cetera. It has a specific place on the agenda, in my view, and the current language, I don't think, opens the door for public input at any of the other places on the agenda. It, it opens it at one specific place on the agenda, unless the intention is something different than that. If it is, we should write it down so we know what it means. If we're gonna receive public input at any stage of the meeting, that's different than having it at a particular time on the agenda.
So Tim was referring to unscheduled, um, things that might happen in a meeting, and the comment from the corporate officer was that, uh, it's still council's prerogative to get consent from council to do something out of, out of the ordinary, and that will always exist without having a procedure about it. And that was what she was trying to say.
I think the chair could always say, we're gonna take comments from the public if they feel like doing that, but that wouldn't be the public input period, that's something different than what's written on the agenda.
Yes, they, they weren't referring to the public input period, but rather, wh- whether having the public input period would then negate the ability to have flexibility in anything else. That was the question, was it not? And the answer was, well, no, it's up to council to decide if they wanna entertain something that's not on the agenda. Um, thank you. So we don't have a motion on the floor, we've had a discussion around delegations, um, as far as whether they should be on which meetings. It is my preference that if we are to have, um, delegations of a, like, so, so council meetings are in the evening and we have less time for them. We, we have to eventually go home. And so if we are gonna restrict the number of delegations, I would prefer that to be at council, where we have less time. I do want delegations to be at the Committee of the Whole, because we could take and entertain more of them there, because we have presumably a little more time, but we also need the discretion to, um, maybe not entertain them if we don't have time, because our business is so long. And so, m- my thinking is, we need a way to bump delegations to the next meeting if we have limited time. It's not about restricting people, it's about trying to utilize the time that we have, when we're, if, if we have a, a lot of stuff to do, that we could put delegations that are not time-sensitive, not related to our business, but we would love to hear at another time, at another time. And I don't, this, this doesn't really address any of that, but I, I would like that ability. Mayor Wasno?
I, I support having delegations at both council of the whole and regular council meetings, because it provides our citizens opportunity, depending on their family requirements, their work requirements, whatever, to have it in this time slot or that time slot. So I, I would support having it as an option at both.
Counselor Isaacson?
Uh, thank you, Chair. So in respect to your, to your recent comment, I think maybe what you want clarity on is that you basically want the, especially at the Committee of the Whole meeting, the chair, in conversation with staff, for example, of the, the presiding member, sorry, the presiding member, um, may, in conversation with staff, request that delegations be bumped to a future meeting if the agenda's looking heavy. So I think, um, I, I think just making, making clarity around who the deciders are. So if staff are preparing Committee of the Whole and saying, hey, we've got, you know, well, right now it's listed as two, but if we change it to like three or four, um, and staff says, hey, actually, we've got a heavy finance, or, you know, budget day or whatever, um, you know, presiding member, in this case, you know, Counselor Elliott, um, uh, do you support moving the, some of the currently scheduled delegations or the currently planned delegations, cause the agenda hasn't been published yet, to a subsequent Committee of the Whole? So I think you're maybe just looking for clarity around practice, which I don't, um, I haven't run up against yet, so I don't know what the practice is. I think that might happen sometimes with the, the mayor, cause with council meetings, but at Committee of the Whole, yeah.
I think you're correct. I think I'm looking for an avenue prior to things being published, where we check in and have the opportunity to move delegations if we need to, to manage our time wisely. Um, so, corporate officer?
Through the chair, sorry. Uh, through the chair, just hearing kind of everything, um, that everyone's saying, um, I wonder, and this is just a, kind of something to get you started, if you wanted to say, um, have, allow three delegations at Committee of the Whole, and maybe one at council, just for timing purposes, and then add, um, have staff add a provision that the scheduled presiding member of that meeting has the discretion to further limit that, um, in discussion with staff based on, um, a, agenda.
Limit or extend if need be, but, yeah. I like that. Um, I would move that if...
What's gonna be my question? We've been talking about a lot of different things, and my question was going to be, is there a motion on the floor? And so if you're making one, that would be good. I would like to know what it is.
Counselor Almeda?
I have a semi-wordy one, so I can email it to the corporate officer, uh, as I don't expect her to keep up with me. Um, so looking at 28.3, which is regarding delegations, in reference to Counselor Palm's earlier comment, which limits currently to two, I do agree that two seems not enough, and then at sometimes, we might have two from the public and one organization that needs to be there. So, my suggested wording is, okay, the number of delegations at a Committee of the Whole meeting shall be limited to two or three delegations from the public, and one to two delegations from organizations, to a maximum of four delegations at each meeting if time allows. If the need arises, one or two delegations may be added to a council agenda. In cases where a longer agenda is on the schedule, staff can limit the number of delegations to two.
Before that's seconded, if I may, Chair?
Kinda covered everything. You guys will say.
Oh, Counselor.
Um, we're gonna, we're not gonna second yet, we're gonna hear from the staff, the corporate officer.
Um, Counselor Palm may have something to say. I was only going to say that, um, that staff with the, maybe the chair, the presiding member, do that, and not just make the call themselves.
Thank you, that was helpful. Um, so, Counselor Isaacson?
Um, I mean, that motion hasn't been seconded. I actually prefer the original one that our corporate, deputy corporate, deputy corporate officer, um, read out. I just am noting, we don't, we've had two motions stated, and neither one has been seconded yet.
Yes, that's correct. Counselor Dought?
Yeah, and I, I think it's, we have ways, and a chance of accomplishing something if we talk about motions that are moved and seconded. And that's just my preference. Makes life easier and things go by quicker. But, you know, I, I heard the corporate officer's suggestions of maybe two delegations at Committee of the Whole and one delegation at council. And, you know, I've heard lots of different numbers, everybody's throwing them out around the table with, and the only motion we've heard is Counselor Almeda's. Counselor Almeda's recommendation is that we have as many as six delegations to Committee of the Whole meeting. Four plus two.
Nope, max of the... No, max of the one.
Oh, I don't, I we can get into this argument if you want, but I heard you say four, plus the chair would have the ability to have two more. But you can respond, you can respond when it's your turn, okay? I would like to have two delegations at Committee of the Whole meetings, two delegations at council meetings. I am at a loss as to how we will make a decision about whether somebody is making a delegation from the public or from an organization. Everybody that I've seen lately come to council is coming as a member of an organization and as a member of the public, sometimes recognizing an organization that they're part of, and sometimes not. I don't know how we would discriminate and say, you can't speak now because you're, you're speaking on behalf of a, a organization, or you can't speak now because you're not speaking as a member of the public. I don't know, we sort that out. I think we're far better off to not get into trying to make those judgments, simply say, this is how many delegations we can have. And to me, if council is willing to sit and listen to them, let's just pick a number. Let's have three at Committee of the Whole meetings and three at council meetings, but let's not make it so complicated that we're spending all our time trying to figure out the definition of who can speak and who can't.
Okay, so we have a speakers list, and we are also hungry and thirsty and all of the other things. I'd like to canvass council if we could do a bio break and come back to this after a short break, if that would be okay. Are people in favor of that? Thumbs up all around? Okay, we're gonna, we're gonna take a five minute recess. Thank you.
Maybe, maybe the members of the public in here might share our pizza with us.
Point of information, Chair, I somehow was kicked off the meeting briefly when I heard, how long is this recess going to be? Can't hear you.
We just wanted to grab some food, bathroom, that kind of stuff, five minutes bio break.
Five minutes, thank you.
Thank you.
Could someone there let me know how much longer will be? It's been 15 minutes.
I'll let you know, Counselor. Thank you.
Okay.
Who wants a piece of pizza? Go grab one. Paul? Paul, you need a piece of pizza.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
I think we can.
Yeah. Hmm? Yeah. Oh. Got it.
We're coming back, Counselor.
Your water, because mine's empty.
Mine's not empty.
You have a good one.
I don't try not to try to keep track of what's going on in the world of like during a meeting. Except today I violated my own rule. Paul Leslie had said, hey, find this document in my office.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for your patience. Like to reconvene this meeting of the Committee of the Whole. And we were discussing delegations and we were trying to come up with the appropriate motion to address our concerns around delegations. And I think Ms. LaForte was going to tell us what she thinks she heard from us. And maybe that can be the motion. We had never had a motion seconded on the floor. We were still trying to get the motion correct. So Ms. LaForte, where were we?
All right, Chair. So my suggestion was that three delegations would be allowed at Committee of the Whole. One at council with a provision that the scheduled presiding member has a discretion to further limit or extend those those numbers with staff in advance of publishing the agenda.
Did everybody get that? Seconded by Counselor Almeida, Counselor Isaacson, you can speak first because I've seen your hand. You're good.
Oh, I mean, I was hoping to second the motion that.
So you are a second seconder.
What was that?
You can be our second seconder.
Okay, all right. So I'm glad to see this move forward because I think it was. Given the discussion, I think it is the best solution. Early when you had first made the motion or suggested a motion, Ms. LaForte, you had referenced, you know, the presiding member in consultation with staff based on the like the potential length of the agenda. And so I just want to clarify that that piece is in there. It's not about. Yeah, the taking, limiting or extending is mostly based on. Like strictly on numbers is based on the lengthy agenda. So anyways, I support this motion.
Thank you. Anybody else want to speak to this motion? Counselor Palm. Counselor Palm. Counselor Palm. Counselor Palm is at the end.
Please speak into the microphone, Counselor Palm.
I agree with Counselor Elliott that there's a difference between Committee of the Whole meetings and council meetings in terms of length and duration, in terms of limiting. So I would like to move an amendment that states up to four delegations for Committee of the Whole and up to two delegations for council. Provide some flexibility to the staff on what's being accepted.
Do we have a second here for Counselor Palm's amendment? He would like to bump up the numbers to two for council, up to four for Committee of the Whole with the existing wording of discretion of the presiding member. Anybody? Okay, so the amendment is on the floor. Did you want to speak to it, Counselor Palm? Okay, Counselor Southcott.
So that basically just limits the maximum number, right? Is that that's your intention?
Distinguishes between the length of the meetings that up to four for Committee of the Whole where we would hope more would come forward and up to two for council meetings in the evening that cut down the duration.
Counselor Almeida.
I appreciate the the thought of the motion. I think Counselor, sorry, I think Ms. LaForte's original motion allowed for staff to engage with the chair of the meeting to add a delegation if if there was a requirement or desire. I don't, I think the amendment's moot because we're covering in that with staff talking to the chair prior to the agenda being published.
Counselor Isaacson.
I guess I would like to echo Counselor Almeida's comments. Given the existing wording, I don't think that the amendment is necessary if an agenda is light and there's a lot of interest from the public, the chair could have that discretion in conversation with staff. But on a regular course of business, prefer to stick to the three and one.
So I'm going to speak briefly. I like the discretion of the presiding member having the ability to make more or less delegations. I think the pressure to accept delegations when we may not want to because of timing or whatever is less if we leave the numbers where they are in the original motion. I like, you know, there's a lot of room for three delegations at a committee of the whole and a lot of room to add more to the council if you need to without having to feel that extra pressure of having really long meetings. So I like the original wording better. Counselor Palm.
Yeah. In terms of.
Yeah.
Point of.
How the public is going to perceive this.
Counselor Palm.
I'm speaking right into my microphone. I guess it's not working.
That's better now.
So, yeah, so in terms of public perception out there, I think when you put the onus on the person in the chair to control that number, if there's a number of people that applied and there is no delegation on the agenda, that doesn't look very good to the public when you're saying three and one. So I would caution about going there and just stick to a number up to so that the public can sense that you want to hear from them.
Any other comments? I'm going to call the question on the amendment. The amendment is to change the numbers to two and four. Yes, yeah. All in favor of the proposed amendment? Any opposed to the? One, two, three. So five opposed and one in favor. Motion to, motion fails. Yeah. Five and one is six, correct. Thanks for the math. So we're back to the main motion. Any comments on the main motion? All in favor of the main motion? Any opposed? We have one opposed. So we have five and one and motion carries. Thank you. We got through the done and we're all clear on the motion. So. Thirty one, one B.
Chair, if I can just make one comment.
Yes, sir.
We are getting late.
We sure are.
Laboring the process and I do not feel comfortable continuing any further this evening without the mayor present.
So the mayor did talk.
I would like to say that we've had enough for tonight. We can come back in another time, deal with the rest when the mayor is present, so that he's at least in the loop and we carry on from there.
Okay, so the mayor did check in with me. He thought a lot of these revisions, which are going to go out for public comment, he thought getting us a draft tonight would be super helpful. Not continuing tonight means that the draft we bring forward will need to be discussed again. If we can finish, we may get that draft finished in time to move forward in a, you know, this year. And so I'll just canvas the rest of the committee, whether we want to continue with the process of the draft or whether we would like to push it to another meeting. So we'll start with you.
Yeah, just real quickly, the skimming over the list that we took down, I think a lot of it is just Ts and Is that are being edited. So I don't think it's going to take us a lot of things, a lot of time.
Okay. How do you feel?
I'd like to soldier ahead and see if we can finish. We invested a lot of time into this. Now, on other days, a lot of time already today. And if we can just focus on the changes people make, I don't think it should take us very long to finish off those and then give staff something to work on. I would like to do that because I'm tired. I think like everybody else, we started at two o'clock and it's a long day. I think we can get through this and I think we owe it to everybody actually as we can to get it. We can move forward in our decision making.
Counselor Southcott.
This is thirty eleven B.
Yep.
The way it reads right now is starting at eleven, "A member wishing to speak for the purpose of, if necessary, by interrupting a member who is speaking, requesting the presiding member to consider and decide, etc." Doesn't exactly follow. So what I would like to suggest is rearranging B so that it states, "A member wishing to speak for the purpose of", and then swapping the language around in B, the second part of that sentence for the first part. And here's what it would say. So I'll sort that again. "A member wishing to speak for the purpose of a matter of comfort, convenience, or privilege of council or a member, may," that's a word I'm inserting, "by interrupting the member who is speaking, request the presiding member to consider and decide on it."
I'll second that.
Great. Anybody have any comments on the?
Basically just swapping the order of the B item around.
So any comments on that motion? Makes good sense to me. All in favor of the edit? Any?
I'm not able to hear.
Counselor Palm is leaving the meeting. We still have quorum? Are we still good here? Carry on then. All in favor of the motion? Any opposed? None opposed. Motion carries. Next, Counselor Southcott.
This is thirty seven, five, A. Thirty seven, five, A. I suggest that we remove the word if from the end of that because that word doesn't follow with the two following items. Reconsideration under this session, this section may only be initiated, one, at the same time council meeting, at the same council meeting as the vote took place, or two, within 30 days, etc. But the word if doesn't belong in there and possibly it's just a typo. I don't think we need to.
I think we need to vote on that. I think staff heard you. Initiated at the same, yeah, within the 30 days following. Yeah, that makes sense. Thirty seven, five, A. And then you have a similar one for thirty nine point six.
Does that make sense to staff?
Do you have a comment, staff?
Right, sure.
It's okay. Are we good? Okay, thank you. It looks like you have a similar one for thirty nine point six.
Yes, I do. So thirty nine, six. I'd like to insert the word which between OCP bylaw and the word may. So it would read, "A bylaw may be amended at any time during your third reading, except a zoning or official community plan bylaw." And here's where I put which. "May be amended after a required public hearing only to the extent, etc." But it makes, it clarifies the meaning of the sentence. I'm pretty confident that is what was intended.
That probably doesn't need to be voted on either. Counselor Almeida.
I think to strengthen Counselor Southcott's point, it should be which only may be amended.
Oh, okay. Right.
Understanding the.
Because that's the charter.
But the CAO might have a different idea.
Through to Chair, I was just perusing through the changes made with all the housing statutes, but I think it's still okay. Thank you. Are we good? Those edits are fine? Staff, you need a motion? Or you're good? Okay.
I think the important part of that one is that it has to be consistent with the provincial legislation on bylaws.
Yep.
There is, there is, bylaws, it's laid out in the community charter.
Yeah.
As long as our language doesn't go something different, be okay.
Yep. So are we at the end of your list, Counselor Southcott? Okay, so we did have the mayor concerned about the his, her, their, the language, but we don't have him with us today. If anyone else wanted to speak on that matter or was concerned about it, we could do that. Counselor Isaacson.
It wasn't a concern, just a clarification. It's consistent with provincial changes and a lot of other organizational policies just to be gender neutral so that it's often is cleaner to use they or them instead of he, she, he, him, she, he, she. So it's just consistent with a lot of other organizations, including the provincial government, are doing.
And then we had Counselor Palm was interested in making special meetings 48 hours instead of 24, but we did address that through another motion that went forward. Those are Counselor Palm's concerns around electronic meetings, publishing, which we also addressed.
Counselor.
Counselor Almeida, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. Counselor Palm's not here, but I did, I was going to address the virtual meeting part because I would expect that everyone's in attendance, but there are times that, you know, we could have a counselor that has a child and the newborn baby would make it a little harder to attend a meeting in person, but could be done virtually. There could be the chance that someone falls off a bike and breaks their back, breaks their their leg, but is fully capable of sitting on a team's call meeting. So I think that's just to defend why eight virtual meetings is there. I have no desire to adjust it from what is that.
Counselor doubt.
And I, you know, I think it's it's reasonable to allow six members to attend electronically. You know, particularly if we have special meetings and ones that weren't scheduled, otherwise people may be away and, you know, we're, we're in the 21st century now. People can participate effectively electronically in meetings. And the more they do that, the better off it is. You know, if I was going to question anything, I'd question why it is absolutely necessary to have the chair there. And I think in our previous discussion, we've said that that we're going to have staff in the room in any, in any circumstance. So having the chair, the presiding officer or the mayor present in the room makes sense allowing, that would allow six others to appear electronically. And I think that's reasonable. Hopefully it doesn't happen too often. But, you know, at the regional district, we, we have not very different rules, but we have chairs, sometimes chair meetings from, from a distance, being on the electronic end of things. And it works better if you've got better video displays, but it does work. I'm willing to accept having whoever is the chair or the providing officer or the mayor in in place and six people attending. Flexibility that Counselor Almeida talked about for that and other some reasons.
Counselor Isaacson.
I know that Counselor Palm made suggestions for numbers three and four, but I'm not interested in making any emotions. I support them as they are. And I think if the public feels like we're not doing our jobs and they don't, and we want to run for reelection, then they don't vote us back in. And so for me, you know, having especially seen how the regional district is able to operate really effectively with a very, very truly hybrid option, I have gotten zero concerns with three and four.
Yeah. So I'm actually thinking we should have wording that says it's allowed and not put any numbers on it. I don't know why we would do that. The elected officials that choose to maybe show up less often will of course be answerable to the public. And if they have good reasons, they'll let the public know and the public will decide if they didn't like that or didn't like that. But they're still at the meeting. They can still participate. There doesn't seem to be any logistical reason why they shouldn't be allowed to participate on the computer. I do like being in person myself and be here as much as I can. I don't think I should impose that value on other people. I think if the meeting does not require someone to necessarily be there and they have good reasons for not being there and they come on the computer, that there shouldn't be restrictions on that participation in that way. So I would actually be perfectly happy with saying that it's allowed and not having numbers on it. It's just allowed. And that's that. I think we need to be flexible. There's many folks with many barriers to participation in local government. And if we can remove a few, that would be probably for the good, for a good governance and participation. So I don't know why we have eight written in there or any limits at all. That's my thoughts on that. Counselor Almeida.
If we are ready to move on to another topic, I believe maybe Counselor Isaacson. I believe, maybe Counselor Isaacson that recommended this before. I had it jotted down with regards to some of the wording around acting mayor. And this one actually comes up two different spots in the bylaws, 12.3 and 47.2. And both of them reference if the mayor and designated acting mayor are absent, that the members present must choose the next council member. But we already kind of have a unwritten agreement, maybe, that the next acting mayor in the list would then assume the role of acting mayor in the absence of the first two, so.
So there's no choosing required?
Yeah, so, and, but 12.3 and 47.2 both kind of reference the members council must choose. And so if we already have a process, we accept. Let's just word it accordingly.
Yeah, okay. So it's an edit to remove the word "choose." I don't-
It's more than one or two words? Do we need a motion?
Are we good? Do you want a motion?
Through the Chair, unless there's anyone opposed, I can make that simple change if.
Counselor doubt might have an opposition. Go ahead.
I would think we could clean the language up. I haven't got it crafted. I just would suggest that we could say, if the mayor's not available, the acting mayor and the acting mayor rotation will be the presiding officer. If they are unavailable, it would go to the next person on the acting mayor list.
Through the Chair, yeah, so item two says that the designated person will fulfill the mayor's duties if the mayor's absent. And then section three, I could reword it. So it says if both the mayor and designated acting mayor are absent, it says from a council meeting, the next council member in the acting rotation will preside.
That's right.
It's actually happened a couple of times already this year, so it makes sense to include.
And then 47.2 is almost the same thing.
Perfect. So I had one. I didn't, I don't know if I forgot to put myself on the list at all, but it was section 29 in the point of orders. It's worded in a way that I do not understand it, and I was hoping to clean that up. Section 29 for points of order. It says, "Without limiting the mayor or presiding member's duty under section 132.1 of the community charter, authority of a presiding member, the mayor or presiding member will apply the correct procedure to a motion." And we are talking about points of order. So that confused me a lot. And then it says, "If the motion is contrary to the rules." And so is the motion in this context meaning the point of order? 29. Can I get some help? Because I don't know, like, to me, this whole section makes no sense whatsoever. Counselor Isaacson?
My reading of this is almost what the mayor or the presiding member should be doing before a council member raises a point of order. So the mayor or presiding member will apply the correct procedure. So if someone's out of order, the intention is that they will apply the correct procedure if a motion is contrary to the rules and whether or not another member has raised a point of order. So it's, my understanding is it's saying that if someone makes a motion or does something that's out of order, the first line of quote-unquote "defense" is for the mayor or the presiding member to apply the correct procedure. That's my reading of it.
Okay, I would, does that need to be there? Because that's the case all the time, right? So would we not want to start this section where we're talking about how you call a point of order? Because there's, like, the mayor or presiding member may reserve the decision until the council meeting? Like, what does that mean? Like, none of this makes any sense at all to me. And then it starts out by saying, "A member must cease speaking when called to order and while the point of order is being stated." And I also would like our procedure to address the fact that when we're making a point of order, we would also suggest a remedy. Because I've been in a position where, without a remedy suggested, we seem to be floating around there. But the entire section is hard for me to understand. And so if it's hard for me to understand, it might be hard for other people to understand. Can we get a re-edit of this? I don't know what to suggest because it's just so confusing.
Through the Chair, section five speaks to the remedy.
Yeah, that's really confusing to me, too. So the issue with the way it's currently worded is if you cite the point of order without a proposed remedy and your decision, your point of order is overturned and decided against by the presiding member, there, and council disagrees and they decide to ask, "Will the Chair be upheld?" And the decision is on, no, the Chair will not be upheld, there is still no remedy on the floor and no, no place in the procedure to talk about it.
Through the Chair, so the wording of that was intended that the remedy comes as soon as the rule or authority is cited. So the person who calls the point of order.
We need to say that, is what I'm saying. It's just not in there.
It does, so it says, "Shall cite the rule or authority applicable without argument or comment and state the appropriate remedy thereafter." So the rule is cited, then the remedy. Because when we did it the other way, it depends, it depends who's making the point of order. If the Chair is sustained, it depends on the situation. Is the Chair sustaining the point of order? Is the Chair sustaining not a point of order? Or like, against the point of order? So if, when the point of order is cited and the remedy stated at the same time, then the remedy is, has been stated. So regardless of what decision ends up going, then you know whether you're gonna go with that remedy or not go with a remedy.
So sorry, I'm just really trying to understand, and I don't at the moment.
To try to help.
Okay, you try. Go ahead.
I don't know where this language came from. I'm gonna suggest that if it said at the end, "The mayor or presiding officer will apply the correct procedure." Colon. A, if a motion or a statement is contrary to the then you go through all of those things. And somebody raises a point of order, in my view of how this goes. They may just think that it's wrong and that life shouldn't be like that and raise the point of order and say, "That's not fair. Let's break some kind of rule." If the person says broken rule, then it's up to the Chair. Once they understand what the point of order is, to say, "This is the Chair's opinion on the rule, whether it's been broken or not, and this is the remedy." And then if anybody in the room doesn't like the ruling or the remedy, they challenge the Chair. The question is always, shall the Chair be sustained? Because the Chair made a ruling. The tendency is to support the Chair all the time, unless people vote against it. And if they defeat the Chair, then they need to go on and figure out what's next. You don't just forget about it, go on. Try to resolve the problem. But I think there's a couple of little changes to the language. And what's confusing, I think, to most people is the word "motion" in there. Because it's not always a motion that's causing people to raise a point of order. So if you took the first paragraph, it stops "procedure" and put a colon there, so they're referring to the motion. And A, that if a motion or a statement is contrary to the rules of procedure, then Eric and, or the Chair, can intervene themselves and rule something on the order or somebody can raise a point of order. Because it does happen from time to time that the Chair hears a motion and thinks it's out of order and just simply says, "According to this rule, I'm ruling that motion out of order." And people have the opportunity to tell if they want.
Okay, so let's suppose, I'm just gonna ask a question of Staff who understands all of these words much better than me. Let's suppose we've had a point of order raised and the presiding member has made a ruling that they disagree that it, then there's nothing wrong and he wants them, he's saying to carry on. The question is put to the council that will the mayor or will the, whatever, be sustained? And the decision is not to sustain that. And we are now sitting in a situation where we have a point of order that has been, or a decision against this point of order that has not been sustained. What happens next? Because I don't see that in there.
So that's when the, through the Chair, that's when the remedy is stated. So if, if there's behavior happening, somebody calls a point of order, they say what the authority is on that point of order and what the remedy would be. It says that that would happen, the authority would be stated, and then remedy. So before anything else happens, that remedy's already been commuting.
So where in this words does it say that? Can you point that out to me?
Section five.
When the presiding member is of the opinion that a motion, okay, so the motion is confusing me. "Opinion that is contrary to the rule and privileges of council, the presiding member will, shall apprise the members present without proposing the question and shall cite the rule or authority applicable to this case without argument or comment and state the appropriate remedy." So is that after? Is that with the original point of order or is that after? And it's, it is confusing me to say, "Opinion that a motion is contrary." Because we don't only just have motions in contrary, it could be some other procedural problem.
I do see where the motion piece is confusing. And yeah, I think it would, it should go higher up. And the point of order is being stated with the remedy. We could do a rewrite of the section.
Thank you. Counselor Almeida?
I was gonna say, that is a really wordy sentence. And I'm wondering if the word "motion" there is actually in reference to the point of order, which is not really a motion, because now we're talking the presiding member is making a decision on the point of order.
And is-
That's the motion that's being referenced.
Is the presiding member just the person who has the floor at the time?
It's the Chair.
Okay. And because it's referring to always the presiding member and it doesn't look like it's the person making the point of order.
Because, I mean, it could be the presiding member or another member making the point of order.
Right, but in this wording, it wasn't. But you're gonna do a rewrite. Counselor Isaacson?
I'm going to make a motion, just so it's on the record, about what we want to do. So I move that Staff update section 29 with plain language and removing reference to motion and instead referencing, for example, activity or behavior, something like that.
Or procedure, whatever.
Procedure, yeah. And three, clarifying when the presiding member versus the person raising the point of order is intended to be speaking. I think those are the three sticking points.
Does that make sense to everyone? Are you seconding? Counselor doubt, go ahead.
We have a motion on the floor, and it seems sensible to me, I think we do, anyway. And it seems sensible to me to refer to the point of order because that's what we're doing. It's not generally a motion. I think it's important to recognize when we're doing that.
That it is a point of order.
The Chair will decide the point of order, whether something's in order or not. And either the person making the point of order or the Chair themselves can state a remedy. And then council can vote, overturn that by challenging the Chair. And if a challenge is successful, then the Chair obviously would have to make another decision. Tried to make one decision, the council has said they don't like that, you're gonna have to make another decision. The original decision might have been, "This motion is out of order." And council disagrees with that, so the logical conclusion would be, "The motion is in order." Simple stuff.
So the motion on the floor is for Staff to update this section with plain language. And Trina listed three things, which were really good-sense things, which I forgot about by now, but I'm sure. Did you want to list them again, Trina?
One is using, oh.
Yeah, go ahead, Ms. Fort. We'll have Ms. Fort to-
That Staff update section 29 by using plain language, removing reference to motion and instead reference either behavior or activity and clarify between whether it's the presiding member or the member who made the motion.
I meant point of order, the member who raised the point of order, not motion.
Point of order, sorry.
Yeah. And we had a seconded by Counselor Almeida, I believe. I would suggest we not use behavior or what have you, but rather just use appropriate procedure or whatever. I don't know if that could be a friendly amendment or you want to vote on that. The wording should, procedure, right? State the procedure you're talking about. Procedure or rule.
It's basically the broken rule.
It's a point of order. It's a contention around a procedure or a rule of some type. Comments? All in favor? Any opposed? None opposed? Motion carries. I think we had a note on 21.4 in red. What was that about? Was that me?
I got a quick one while you're looking for that.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. For Staff, just to pay attention, we had already covered 12.3 and 47.2 about the acting mayor rotation. And I found, I thought there was a third one. It's 16.3B, which also talks about choosing a member to preside if the acting mayor's not there. So they're all somewhat similar.
Do we got that? Do we need a motion for that or are we good? I don't think so either. I have 21.4. I wanted to change the wording a little bit. I don't know if we want to say members of the public or just members speaking in, you know, people speaking in chambers. Just because it may not, you know, it could be public, it could be someone else. But I don't think we need to specify that it's necessarily public. So people speaking in chambers when providing input, use disrespectful language, make whatever those things are, will be asked to stop speaking immediately, be given the opportunity to adjust their comments accordingly, rather than be made to apologize. Because I think adjusting your comments to suit appropriate appropriately for parliamentary language or what have you. I think a five-year-old should be able to watch our show and not, not have people. It should be always appropriate to public language. It's a public forum. People should, should use public language, I guess, is my opinion. I don't think anybody can, it's, you can disagree using polite language as well as you can without using poor language and bad behavior is not required to disagree with people. poor language and bad behavior is not required to disagree with people. It just isn't. So my, my point I'm trying to get at here in, in changing this is we're not, we want to give the opportunity to adjust and not necessarily apologize. So people may not feel sorry, so you can't really tell them they are. So that's not really what we want to do there.
Continue with the comment, reranged commenting. And I'm going to say that members of the public, I think is anybody who's not a elected member of council. I don't think it's a complicated definition to figure out who the members of the public are. They're not staff, they're not members of council. And I'm quite happy in there. And this language gives people the opportunity to apologize. It's language that's in the community charter. People don't have to apologize. Chair usually asks them to apologize or they will be excluded from the meeting. Then people have a choice. Not being forced to apologize, they're being offered the opportunity to apologize. And if they do, they can continue in the meeting. If they don't apologize and continue to be disrespectful, they'll be excluded. Well, I think it's reasonable language, the way it is. And it's, you know, it, it's not forceful. Language gives people an opportunity. More forceful language would say simply, if someone uses unparliamentary language, the chair will exclude them from the meeting, period. I think this is way better than that. It gives an opportunity to tell people that their language is inappropriate. Gives them an opportunity. If not, it's a way for the chair to maintain decorum.
Counselor Isaacson.
I think this 21.4, I think makes sense in this section, but it also makes sense in other sections. And I also think should apply to, it should apply to staff and council members as well. We should not be making defamatory comments of one another. Obviously, that's for our code of conduct. But I, I would even think that 21-4 could be moved to section 10, which is conduct at meetings. And, and just saying that speakers rather than members of the public, because it's not only about public input, it's also about Q and A, it's also about delegations. And again, also about council members and staff. So I, I move. Yeah, I will make a motion. I move to move section 21-4 to section 10, which is the conduct at meeting section. And replacing references to members of the public to replace it with speakers.
Seconded by Counselor Almeida. Counselor Almeida.
Thank you, Chair, I'm in favor of that motion. It might actually make 10.1 somewhat irrelevant because they kind of overlap each other. So staff can play with the wording over there because 10.1 and 21.4 kind of similar, say similar things.
Okay. All in favor of the motion? Any opposed? None opposed? Motion carries. The part about 10.1, do you want to get rid of it or not?
Well, just reading through it, it seems to overlap because 10.1 talks about
Conduct, yeah.
Person is acting improperly, person presiding. I mean, I guess there's a little bit of acting improperly versus just verbal. But, I mean, if you're, if you're acting improperly, you're being disrespectful, I guess, right? So.
It's language from the community charter.
Okay.
Okay, we're good then. Counselor Dow.
Oh, I, you know, I, I think we can leave both of them in there. I think we could change the order of everything if we just try to find a perfect solution. It's our procedure bylaw, we can number them the way we want to. The important part to me is to make sure that we're expecting, we're telling people the expectation of a level of respect that we want to see in the room. I think that's the important part and I think we're getting towards that.
Does anybody see anything I have missed? Counselor Dow.
One, I, I think we're out of list two, I hope we aren't. We've done a lot and I appreciate that. But, but I'm going to make the motion right now anyway. So Counselor Isaacson seems to have more. I'm going to make a motion. It's a separate motion from the one we've already passed about amendments. To when, when the draft procedure bylaw, the draft procedure, amendment bylaw comes to council, that it include a redlined section that shows all of the changes from the previous 2015 procedure bylaw.
Do we have a secondary? Seconded by Counselor Almeida, discussion? Counselor Isaacson.
I actually have a question of staff. I feel like some of the changes are pretty substantive and I feel like Twyla in helping us with this really started from perhaps other communities' models of good current practice. And so I'm wondering if it's even possible or whether we should just have the previous and. Anyways, I'm curious, I'm wondering how hard that will be.
Through the chair, the, the draft here is, you're correct, Counselor Isaacson, it is substantially different. So like order was changed, new sections were added, completely, sections were removed. So it would essentially be almost entirely redlined, like the old procedure bylaw. So it, it could, it could be, but they're, they're quite different documents. So it, it wouldn't look like a very equal comparison. I think you would be really jumping around like, oh, we took this out and moved it here, it's not there anymore. Or just for a, if you're looking at it for a tool to compare, they wouldn't be super comparable.
So Counselor Dow, followed by Counselor Isaacson.
Oh, I, I didn't think it would be a simple task. But we have already tried sending out a, a article or publishing in our agenda, a draft document that had highlighted changes. But the highlighted changes were only changes from a previous draft. There were not changes from the original bylaw. The concern I have was that members of the public did not think that we were being straightforward with them. They were looking at, as I did, through the old procedure bylaw and saying, well, they didn't say this was changed and they didn't say that was changed. So I'm looking for a way to explain to the public how it is that we have changed the bylaw or we are proposing to change it from the 2015 bylaw. And because of the process that we've used through all the different workshops, moving stuff from one paragraph to another and changing the orders, changing the, what's contained in one another, it's going to be a complicated process. But I think if we want to successfully try to pass this and get the public to accept it, we're going to have to explain what the difference is between the old bylaw and the new bylaw. And if people have a better way of doing it, than some kind of annotated or redlined document, I'd love to hear it, but I don't think we should just slam down a new document and say, here it is, you figure out the differences.
Through the, sorry, Counselor Isaacson.
Just a, a quick suggestion, rather than a redlined document, what, what planning staff have sometimes done with bylaw ones is they have kind of the original one and each item is like line by line in a table. And beside it, it says, this has moved to section 24 with some slight wording changes or this has been removed completely. And so just the original with a note for what's gone or where it's been moved to or what's, or.
Or where it's addressed, replaced by something else.
Yeah. Through the chair, thank you, Counselor Isaacson. That was along the lines of what we're going to suggest. Because as the staff and Twyla were looking at the changes that you wanted, it was a radically different document. So she did say to you, what you were getting was a new procedure bylaw. Because to go through and rework would have been a very confusing thing. So the option you're providing, I think, is more practical because they are two very, very different documents. So i-if that would suffice, we could go through in the manner you suggest.
So in order to do that, we would have to defeat this motion and make a new motion that reflects the table of changes or table of explanations, I guess that would be a better word. Because we would be explaining from the old draft, what was gone, replaced, whatever, and where it shows up in the new document through a table or what have you. Is that what you're suggesting?
I was going to move an amendment to the, to the motion as striking reference to a redlined document and inserting an item by, a table, a table with description of changes with each item.
Do we have a secondary for the amendment?
Isn't clear.
It was seconded by Counselor Southcott. We can discuss the amendments on the floor. Counselor Almeida.
I'm sorry, just scratching my head.
Woke you up. You were just seconding, you didn't have a comment?
Uh, no, I'm fine with the, the motion as is and I think staff will find a way to make it work.
Okay, we've got the amendment on the floor at the moment, Counselor Dow.
I don't believe so.
Okay, all in favor of the amendment? Any opposed? None opposed, amendment carries. All in favor of the main motion as amended? Any opposed? None opposed, motion carries. No, I'm with you, I got you. Okay, so I think, does anyone have any last items they want to address in, in the document? Okay, Counselor Isaacson.
Um, yeah, I'm on, so section 21. This speaks to, I think Counselor Dow's concerned that we don't really have. Okay, what I would like to propose is I move that the purposes of section 21.1, 2, and 3 also be applied to section 22 and where's the sheet of paper, in the delegation section. And, and what that means is, like, the intention of 21.1 is to specify the purpose that they can make public comment or public input. We already have that for the public clarification one, but we don't have that intro for the delegation one. So making sure that it's in all three. And number two, we talk about attending electronically. Right now, Q and A is, is possible to do by phone. And so just making sure that it's clear, if people want to submit their questions by email or by phone, that that also is transferred to the public questions period. And then the three is that providing, presiding member providing additional direction be consistent throughout those three opportunities where the public is providing input. So I'm sorry, I got into my, I wanted to make sure that I was describing my motion so you understood whether or not you wanted to second it or even support it.
So if I understand the motion, it is to repeat sections 21, 1, 2, and 3, but for those other sections and change to suit those other sections, right?
Yeah, so not the exact wording, but the intention of those three to make sure that they're covered in the other two public input sections of the, or public participation sections of the agenda, which are the public clarification and delegations.
Counselor Dow.
I, yeah, I have a question and I don't think you can take the language and take the language wholesale and put it in all three different ones because there was, those are three particularly different public opportunities and they need to remain different. And I'm not sure why you would not include paragraph four.
Because we already voted to move that to section 10.
Oh, yes, we did.
So, so, so Counselor Dow, I did say that the intention is to, to copy the intentions over or, or the, the purposes over, but, but as suited to those each sections. Because they are, like you said, they have different purposes and are slightly different.
It helps define what they're for, yeah. So is that clear enough for our staff or how are we doing?
Through the chair, thank you. I'm just wanting to confirm that the number one item, is there anything in there that's not, is it the name and address piece then?
It's not covered under delegations right now. So we don't have that first comment about, yeah, that, we don't have that.
The purpose of it, yeah. The purpose statement for each of the other sections. Of course, the purpose is going to be different for each of the things. And so it's not exact wording. But we would like a, a section like section one under the other ones that's, that just states the purpose of what they are. So people can understand the difference.
Sorry, through the chair, under public clarification, it says the purpose and gives the two minutes. And under delegations, the purpose will depend on what the delegation is about and they have a different time limit. So I'm just wanting to make sure I get what that initial purpose is, would be under delegation.
So my intention, I, like oftentimes on city websites, there's something like members of the public who wish to make a presentation to, you know, something like, you know, members of the public or organizations who wish to make a presentation to council. Like, there isn't that language really about what a delegation is meant to be.
Thank you.
That's, that was my intention.
Oh, introductory rather. Okay, gotcha. Okay, do we have a secondary for that motion?
You already did, yeah.
I think we were just trying to get the wording clear, the intent clear. Seconded by Counselor Almeida, comments on the motion? My only concern is staff understands the motion. Okay. Counselor Dow, would you like to?
I hope they do. And I can see us spending a lot of time debating these three particular clauses if it comes up next time it comes to a public debate. So there will be plenty of opportunities to fix the language.
So I think we, we'll call this question and then I'm going to call the debate on this topic for today. All in favor of the motion? Any opposed? None opposed? Oh, are you opposed? Okay, motion carries. Counselor Almeida.
Just a small tidbit, looking still at 21.1, if you noticed. Second line of 21.1 refers to on the council agenda for that meeting. But since our procedure bylaw covers council and committee of the whole, we might just need to just put on the agenda for that meeting.
I think they were going to do a different section for committee of the whole, that was another motion we made. So that closes our agenda, item 7.1. And that brings us to notice a motion, which Mayor Wazna is not in attendance. So I would ask, I think we want to put this to the next committee of the whole or does, does the corporate officer have a thought?
And Chair, it's just a notice of motion, so no discussion required, it's going to be on a future agenda.
You're correct. Thank you, corporate officer, I am tired, aren't I? Counselor Dow, you were just going to say the same thing?
It's just a notice of motion, so it'll come up at some future time.
Oh, okay, well, I will point out, there is a notice of motion for everyone's pleasure to read so they are prepared for debate when it comes up. And when would that notice of motion come forward? Or the motion, actually?
On the neck, not in two days, but on the next council agenda, which may be.
In the.
If we can. If we get. To be determined.
Okay, great, thanks. We have a question period. Any questions from the press? You might come all the way up here just to tell me he's got nothing to ask.
Thank you, Chair, my head is swimming from the discussion on the procedure bylaw review. So.
So I'll have to try and digest that and maybe come up with some questions later. I did have some questions with regard to the official community plan update. And I was wondering, and I see the planning is here no longer, but I'm wondering how much has been budgeted for the OCP process, whether that report could be given back to me at some point.
Through the chair to Mr. Kalinsky, we can give you an update on that directly.
That would be very helpful and handy. And so one question I had is whether the budget takes into consideration outside help and that sort of thing, whether consultants have been factored into the, the estimates that have come forward.
Through the chair to Mr. Kalinsky, some consulting dollars have been put towards some of the background studies that need to be done. And there is the flexibility to look at some of that for additional support when it comes to public engagement. Thank you.
I thank the CAO for the responses. Those were my questions, Chair, thanks.
Thank you. Any questions from anybody else in the gallery? Come forward, Mr. Ruben.
Thank you. I got a couple of questions in regard to your correspondence. I see that Mr. Gao from the planning department was given opportunity to talk to it, but I wasn't. And I realize I had put this in at the last committee or council meeting and it was turned down for being a delegation. And this time, I don't know what staff or who made the decision, but if you read my correspondence, it says, thank you for letting me speak in regards to this application. So I, my question is, who made the decision to strike me, my rights as a delegation? That's my first question.
I don't know.
And Chair, apologies for the misunderstanding if that was the case. I think the last email I received from you is that you were submitting it as correspondence. So I thought you had changed your mind to be correspondence instead of a delegation. So apologies, I misunderstood that.
Well, that, that's fine. I put this together with great thought. And kind of at a loss here. I put this application in January 2nd. I actually talked to the planning department in December. And here I am, still don't have the, even my, I don't have anything going through that's going to make a difference. My development permit is installed. I've paid big money for it. My planning department, the planning department is stalling me and it has been for quite a while. I don't even know where to go.
This is a question and answer period.
Pardon?
The point of order is, is that this is the question period. So we're hoping you could get to a question.
I asked a number of questions in this letter and I've not been answered by the CAO, by the planning department, and I've brought this up many times. I'm spending a lot of money in this town. I don't need to ask questions. This is question period. And I'm voicing my opinion. And my opinion is that someone in your staff is stalling everything, holding everything off. No, I am making community contributions that I don't even have to and they're part of the planning department, the planning departments. I have to get an outside lawyer out of town to do those covetments. And why isn't the development permit going through at the same time? There's no reason the development payment should be held up. I'm posting $185,000 bond next week for a sidewalk that goes nowhere. I'm just asking this council to start looking into some things. I don't even know where to go. I'm intimidated when I walk in this building, when I have to go talk to Jason or one, talk to the CAO. I don't even try to attempt to because I'm intimidated. So I, I think that you had three delegations up here. None of them were bringing income into this community. I'm bringing income. I'm bringing millions of dollars in investment and you just ignore me. And I, I have to say, I've written numbers of letters trying to keep this separate from Quebec Street, but it still keeps coming back. Why am I being held off? So I, I voiced my opinion. My questions in here will go unanswered. So I, I don't really think we can get into a whole long thing that should have took 10 minutes to, to had talked about. And then Jason gets to talk about it and I get nothing. So that's justice in this community now, right? Thank you.
Okay, so thank you for the, thank you for those questions. Many of them reside, the answers reside, of course, with the planning department and the director in charge of those decisions. Council doesn't have a role in many of those decisions. Does staff have anything to add to that?
Oh.
No, Mr., no, Mr. Ruben, I was not asking if you had anything to add. Thank you.
Through the chair to council, I think I'll just make the statement that planning follows a process. There are times where we do not get complete documentation for applications. I cannot speak specifically to this particular process, but I've observed that the planning department follows with due process. And there are times where applicants may or may not have met the requirements that are needed to move their applications forward. This is frequent with time. I would also like to state that I've only met directly with Mr. Ruben once. And I take umbrage with the fact that he's made the statement that myself and others are intimidating. So because the behavior that I'm hearing behind me is actually what I experienced in one meeting I had with him. And I made it very clear that I expect reasonable and decent behavior towards staff in terms of maintaining a safe working environment. And I am very clear about that and I will uphold that for staff. Thank you.
All right. Any further questions? Counselor Dowd.
Just wait and see if there's any further questions.
I, I thought I had seen a number join online. I'm wondering, oh, never mind.
Mr. Whitaker. It must be very hot out. He's wearing his shorts.
Roger Whitaker, citizen of Powell River. So we're supposed to ask questions only and only what's on the agenda. And this is all about 7.1. Is counsel aware, early on in the barely discernible, nearly eight and a half hours of workshop that produced this procedure bylaw, that the counselors heard saying very loudly, we must keep our power? Power? Counselors do not have power. Counselors are elected representatives. Second question, is counsel aware that as elected representatives, they're in the chairs they occupy at the pleasure of the electorate? Those are serious questions. I've listened to almost the full eight and a half hours of that stuff that we just did another five hours on. And it's almost starting to get a bit like the chickens, which we spent nearly 40 hours on in the last administration and lost two residents that moved because one didn't like the chickens next door to the other guy. Nearly 40 hours. So anyway, those are my two questions. I think you all may want to consider them or respond tonight.
I'm absolutely aware. Thank you, Mr. Whitaker. Any other questions in the gallery or online? All right, Mark. Fill in the goy.
Phone left here. Mark Hassett. The bylaw that we're just going, you were just going through, that you've spent approximately 10 hours on, does that have to be rewrote? Like, is it expired its time or is it a choice to rewrite it now? Or that's what I'm kind of wondering. CAO could maybe answer that for me?
Okay.
Through the chair, would you mind repeating the first part to where you're talking about the OCP?
That bylaw we just discussed for the last four hours.
The procedure bylaw.
The procedure bylaw. Does that bylaw have to be rewrote or is it elected to be rewrote now? Or has it timed out?
Okay, through the chair to Mark. Any bylaw other than some where it's best practiced, like an OCP to review frequently, it is at the discretion of council. So frequently there are bylaws that best practices from years ago have changed. And I think council, going back to March or May of 2023, directed staff to look at amendments to improve the procedure bylaw so that they can manage their meetings better. And so this is pretty standard, that most councils will regularly look at updating to best practices, their procedure bylaws. So there's no actual requirements, but we will have some bylaws that, I'll make a glib comparison. There's strange bylaws out there dealing with boa constrictors on Main Street. You know, from time to time, councils at their discretion, when bylaws don't meet their needs, will direct staff to look at best practices to improve them. So in this case, that's what council directed way back, I believe in 2023. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And the reason I ask that question is because four of you were here in the last council, three of you are new in this council. And in the last council, the mayor used to get beat up on all the time by a lot of people. And he never, he took it in stride. And I feel that when I listen to you here, that you're rewriting and you're really pushing on the delegates coming in and people talking. And I will agree, some of them have got out of hand. I'm not saying they haven't, but you're trying to hold the damper on them. And when I look at the last council, you guys were sitting there alongside the mayor. There's four of you that were sitting there alongside the mayor and he took it in stride and never, never tried backing down. And he never felt threatened. And I don't think any of you have ever felt threatened in them chairs in this council chamber. I've been at many and there's not many I've missed over the last 15, 20 years. So I really wonder at, you know, you're too far into it now. You got what, 10 or 12 hours and I don't know how many dollars into it to stop now. But with the council or with the staff and overworked, overwhelmed with paperwork, with everything going on, I don't know if really right now was the time to rewrite it. That's why I was wondering if it had to be. Anyways, just my thought. I think you're rewriting it. It's done now basically, but it's for the wrong reason. And that's just my thought. Any questions?
So.
Have you got, no, that's a statement I made, yes. But have you got any questions for me?
No.
This is a time on the agenda for the public to ask questions, not to have an argument.
I'm not having an argument. I asked my question.
Thank you. So everybody's all out of turn here and so I'm just going to call you back to order. Counselor Southcott has a question and I would also like to respond. Thank you.
Actually, it's not a question. I just want to let you know, Mr. Hassett, that the intention to write the procedure, rewrite the procedure bylaw goes way back before this term. It could even go back two terms, but it was part of Mr. Jackson's list and it was pretty high on the list. However, he was distracted by a whole lot of work. And so this is the only bylaw that, that didn't finish being rewritten. But there were a number. This definitely was part of, most of last term was the intention to rewrite it because of a, a number of deficiencies perceived in the original one. So I just wanted to add that little bit of information. It definitely, that, that other procedure bylaw had a number of, I'm trying to find my own list of problems with that. I haven't found it yet, but it goes back.
Okay, and thank you for that because that's not the way it looks. And that's why I'm saying, I'm just getting from my perception, sitting in the gallery.
You're not the only one.
I'm giving you my opinion, what I see. And that's why I would, I wanted to ask the question.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. So the motion for this council to have staff look at that was about a year ago when, before our current CAO was in the chair that she's in. And it was part of decisions recommended through the acting CAO of the day, which was Tom Day, where he wanted to change a lot of how we had portfolio systems and a whole bunch of things. And the impetus was because we were in this strange transition time where the old bylaw was completely out of date with what we were doing. And so it, it made it kind of awkward. The timing for now is because that's how long it takes to get bylaws on the docket. It wasn't meant to be at this time in particular. It's just, this is where it landed.
Okay. Thank you. No, I'm just, I was just telling you from my perception in the chair back there, what I see and what I'm thinking. And I'm sure a lot of the public is thinking the same thing.
We couldn't get a bylaw on the docket that fast if we wanted to. Every bylaw that comes before us has been started a long time before you see it in the public.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
I would accept a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Perfect, seconded by Counselor Almeida. All in favor? Unanimous, we are adjourned.